Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Commissioner Fong?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Nguyen?
Present. I'd like to ask Mr. Okuriki to lead us in invocation. I invite everybody to please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to ask Mr. Steve Sanders to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we humbly ask that you bless everybody who is assembled here this evening and the work we seek to do. You have enabled us to serve our community, each in our own way. Help us to see each other's service as complementary. Give us the ability to work together in harmony, even when there's honest disagreement in the decisions we face today. We ask these things with gratitude and confidence in your goodness and love. Amen.
If you could face the flag, put your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. And we have a couple of presentations.
Actually, we have one speaker for housing.
Let's do that after the presentation. Thank you.
Yes, we have a presentation tonight, a community spotlight recognizing the man and woman of the year, and Mr. Okuriki who has that report.
Thank you, Madam City Council. This evening, the City of Gadding Grove City Council takes great pleasure in recognizing two outstanding members of the community for their exceptional efforts and sustained their contributions to Gadding Grove. They are the 2016 Gadding Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year. Would Steve Sanders and Sandy Thomas please come forward? Each year, the Gadding Grove Chamber of Commerce selects two dedicated service-oriented individuals who consistently demonstrate community pride through volunteer efforts. It is the city's privilege to recognize these two outstanding residents. We'll begin with the Man of the Year, Steve Sanders. A long time... We could start with the lady.
That's okay, really.
That's the way it was written for me.
It's okay. I'm okay. There you go.
A longtime resident and a graduate from Santiago High School, Steve served in the United States Air Force, which led to a lifetime career in law enforcement. He was a member of the Gadding Grove Police Department SWAT team for 26 years and was awarded the Medal of Valor, the department's highest award. After 31 years, Steve retired from the Gadding Grove Police Department as a lieutenant. He served as president for the Strawberry Festival Board, as well as the Boys and Girls Club of Gadding Grove. Steve is a member of the Kiwanis Club, the Gadding Grove X Lodge, and is currently a firearms manager at Golden West College, and also an assessor for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. Next, we have our Woman of the Year, Sandy Thomas. Sandy is the vice president and relationship manager at Farmers and Merchant Bank in Gadding Grove. She is a longtime resident and a graduate of Bozart Grande High School. Sandy is currently on the advisory board of the Gadding Grove Assistance League, is a scholarship reader for Orange County Ronald McDonald House charities, and she's also a community member of the Gadding Grove Chamber of Commerce's Government Affairs Committee, a committee that advocates for local businesses. She received the Women Making a Difference Award from Senator Lou Correa in 2010, the Cypress College Americana Award in 2012, and the Community Leadership Award from the Korean-American Chamber of Commerce of Orange County in 2014. Sandy was also recognized as a Paul Harris Fellow from the Rotary International in 2015. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Steve Sanders and Sandy Thomas with a gift in recognition of their selection as 2016 Gadding Grove Man and Woman of the Year. Congratulations both.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations, Steve. Congratulations. Congratulations, Steve. Air Force, huh?
I just wanted to thank everyone for this recognition. I'm shocked and very honored to be receiving this, and I thank you so much for the council to recognize Steve and I. Congratulations to Steve, he's a hard act to follow. Most appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you for the recognition. It's very heartfelt, I do appreciate it. And appreciate the chamber for recognizing the volunteer hours. And a lot of us don't do this for recognition, but when it is bestowed upon us, we're extremely surprised. And if you're interested in some of the service clubs that we have out here, you can talk to Sandy or myself or other representatives, and we're more than happy to introduce you to some of the clubs that we have here in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to do oral communications for housing first. Barbara Schneider?
Hi. My name is Barbara Schneider, and I actually live in Stanton on the southwest end, which is adjacent to Garden Grove Boulevard. And our concerns are, with my neighbors together, are the motels that are located on either side of Beach Boulevard on Garden Grove Boulevard. And we're concerned about the felons and parolees that are living there. We do not see any strong presence of Garden Grove Police Department there. We do see Westminster PD. I know there's a little bit of a division there through even one of the parking lots of Westminster and Garden Grove. But our problems are, we have people that are spilling out of these motels that are maybe friends that aren't living there, I don't know, but we have people defecating all over the streets in parking lots that are adjacent to our side of Garden Grove Boulevard, which is the north side. I've called Public Works three times in three weeks to come clean up the defecation. No one ever came, but this volunteer Todd came and picked up everything wonderfully. But we never saw anybody... I was told to call Public Works to help with the situation. Our other concerns are that at these motels, we don't know... I've only found one sex offender at one of the three motels there. And there are children that are in residence at these motels, and this was a child sex predator that is at one of the motels. We've also seen delivery trucks from liquor stores delivering liquor there, and I believe that is a probation violation and parole violation to have liquor. So, these people are spilling out on the streets, loitering, there's prostitution, and they're coming over into Stanton, and we do call Stanton PD. But the motels are quite a nuisance in the neighborhood. I know for Garden Grove, I believe Garden Grove, they're getting a lot of 911 calls, a multitude of 911 calls. And, you know, we're just really concerned about this, and we want to follow up on this. And we really need something done, and we're hoping that Garden Grove will help us do something about this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I know that other, I think Stanton and Anaheim and Westminster have a conversation going on regarding the development off of Beach Boulevard. And I'd like to ask if our city manager can contact the city manager in Stanton to see what can be done and get in that conversation as well. Okay, so we move on with our housing agenda.
Yes, we have one consent item, which is receive and file the Housing Authority's Status Report from April 2016.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Move it. Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. No items for consideration. Any matters? Fellow commissioners? The director's just stepped out. And hearing and seeing none, we're going to adjourn the housing. Take a short break. We're back. We're going to start with oral communications simultaneous with the other agencies. First up, Kimon. Yep, Mai Balin. And I see former council member Dina Nguyen. Will you be assisting in interpreting? Thank you.
Her name is Kimon, and she would like to ask me to read this letter to the council members. This letter is from Mr. Hoang Lee. Mr. Hoang Lee is a member of Vietnamese community, and he was a former DEA agent for the United States Drug Enforcement Administration and also a federal law enforcement agent. Mr. Lee was a police major and chief of narcotics investigation bureau for the Republic of South Vietnam from 1967 to 1975. He could not be here tonight because he's in Thailand teaching a course on counterterrorism. Mr. Lee is a certified law enforcement instructor for the FBI and international law enforcement training consultant for more than 15 years. And he has written about seven questions for the council members to keep in mind as they will review whether the marijuana dispensary should be in Garden Grove. And he said, "If we allow marijuana distribution in Garden Grove, turf war between drug gangs could begin in our city," and that's a question that you should have in mind. "Distributing marijuana is the most lucrative business. Drug gangs always control and protect their turf." "Adequate medical services, according to the U.S. Department of Human Resources, there were 455,000 emergency room visit-associated cannabis use in 2011 nationwide, and that number is increasing. Do we have an adequate control policy and laws to punish those who distribute marijuana illegally to minors? And are we ready for increased traffic accidents associated with marijuana uses? Do we have enough budget and resources for law enforcement and medical services? If we are not ready for these problems, can we let the drug gangs multiply like that is happening in Mexico? If we fail to control these problems, how can we gain trust from our constituents?" And he wants to thank you for allowing him to give some constructive contribution, and he sent his retired DEA ID just as proof that he is a former DEA agent and an instructor currently. Thank you. Okay, she doesn't have any other comments.
Thank you, Ms. Dina Nguyen. Thank you, Ms. Dina Nguyen, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor Baugh. I want to thank the council for having the Neighborhood Forum on May 18th. It was very productive, and a lot of the residents got a chance to state their opinion on how they feel about medical marijuana dispensaries. I'm here on behalf of my friend Nancy Nguyen, a former PTA president for the state of California. She cannot be here tonight because her daughter is receiving an award from the Unified School District. She wants to tell everyone to be part of your children's education by joining the PTA. She also wants everyone to join her fight against marijuana dispensaries in the city of Garden Grove. The tax money the city will gain will not be able to bring back the lives that have been ruined and will be ruined by drug use and illegal drugs as well as legal drugs.
Ms. Nguyen, I'm sorry to interrupt, but your English is understood perfectly fine by the council. You can please continue.
I'm sorry, this is a public session, and I know it's on television, so I like to say some part of it in Vietnamese, so that the Vietnamese people who don't understand can understand. And some part in Spanish, because the Spanish people don't understand. I still have my three minutes, and I don't want to spend those three minutes arguing with you, Mayor Nguyen, if you don't mind. I'm trying to do this really fast.
Go ahead.
I'm here on behalf of my friend Nancy Nguyen, ex-presidente of the PTA of the state of California. I want to say to all of our children in their education that their children should join the PTA. She also wants to say that all of us should join her in the fight against marijuana dispensaries. Thank you. Come on, you.
Hi, Beau. Clay Bach. And then Douglas Hughes.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So I was able to attend last week's Garden Grove community meeting concerning the legalization of marijuana shops in Garden Grove. At least 70% of the people who spoke against it, including our police chief and Garden Grove school personnel. Of the 30% for it, at least half of them were from out-of-the-city lobbyists for the marijuana industry wanting to cash in on the shops being legalized in Garden Grove, and I see some of them here this evening. The Garden Grove School District personnel stated incidents with students being high, selling marijuana, and even eating edibles, cookies, suckers, et cetera, right under their teacher's observation, has skyrocketed in our schools with these pot shops being here and making it so readily available. Also, a number of business people told horror stories about their businesses being in the vicinity of pot shops. This is not right to let our children and businesses be victimized by these people who care nothing but for the money they bring in. I called my sister today. She works for the city of Fontana for many years. I asked her if they have pot shops there. She said, "No, we kick them out. We don't allow them." I said, "Well, how did you do that?" She said, "Well, if the mayor and city council want them gone, they'll be gone." She asked, "Well, how does your police department feel about it?" I told her they are adamantly against the idea of legalizing and regulating these pot shops. She said, "Wow, that's unusual for a council and mayor to go against the advice of their police department and the people they hired to take care of public safety." This isn't about people with illnesses or people who just want to smoke marijuana, because as someone mentioned at that meeting, they can make a phone call, it can be delivered to their door. So people that need it for illnesses should definitely have it. And also, if your big concern is revenue from these shops, start finding them $1,000 a day. With 20 illegal shops, that's $20,000 times 30 days in a month, so that's $600,000 a month we can make for our city if revenue's your issue. This is about our teenagers becoming addicted and our businesses who are next to these shops being victimized. These shops are a blight on our community. Regulating them is a ridiculous idea. We're going to be promoting the Wolf Lodge, Nickelodeon Resorts to families, then they drive down the freeway and they see big billboards just telling them how Garden Grove has all these great marijuana shops. And that's exactly what's happening in Santa Ana. You can drive down the 55, see huge billboards advertising their marijuana. The citizens in Garden Grove are not stupid. It would be a complete and utter shame to put votes you feel you can obtain in the November elections because people coming out to vote for the initiative to legalize marijuana in the state are money you may obtain or hope to obtain from the marijuana industry above our teenagers who are becoming addicted and the nightmare that their families are going through, and our businesses who are next to these shops who are being victimized. Or, I mean, this decision shouldn't even be coming before the council with our police department saying... I mean, I have a two-page report from our police department saying absolutely not keep them illegal. These are the people we're hiring for our public safety. So these shops, they're a blight on our community, and it's time to stand up for our families and businesses and kick out these illegal shops from Garden Grove. Illegal, that means they're not... It's against the law. It means they should not be there. But where I live, by Brookhurst and Chapman, there's six shops within a quarter mile. I mean, how does that happen? And you know them because their windows are all blacked out. What legitimate business blacks out their window? And you know, sometimes I'm going home, and it's 10 o'clock at night, they're still open. Car's in the parking lot. I mean, is that a legitimate business? So, anyway, I'm asking you to do what needs to be done. As soon as you decide, they'll be gone. Thank you very much.
Douglas Hughes? And then Thomas Gibbs?
Thank you, Mayor. I sold a building on Brookhurst and Orangewood to the Sisters of the Loving Cross. And the Par Amara of the Planning Commission told them they had to cut the garage in two because the fire chief wants to get his fire truck in the back. I sat on that for a month or so, and I said, "I can't believe that." When I was a young guy, I drove a truck, and that wouldn't be right. So I went over and talked to the fire chief. I didn't get to him, but I got to the man that's in charge of where the truck will come into this building and how it'll leave, all through Garden Grove, residential and commercial. He said, Captain Wing said, "Absolutely not. The truck would either be parked in the front lot or in the alley." So Par Amara lied, because who would question the fire chief said? And I'll say it again, they lied to the sisters and me and the interpreter, Jennifer. It's come down to, you have given them the power to step forward and never mind the city code. The city code says there is no setback. There's no reason in the code for it to be cutting the garage in two. So Child Services then was the answer. No, Child Service has no reason for it. But now they have an answer. It's for the children. And then they'll change the subject. No, no, don't change the subject. How is it for the children? How will a garage being cut in half help a child? And they will not answer it because there is no answer. Now, this is a prime case of employees under your osmosis overpowered, and it would be the best thing for Garden Grove to put a stamp on it, because if they'll do it to one, they'll do it to another, and it's not good for little businesses, especially for the Sisters childcare. The... So then it became traffic engineer. So I called in and asked for the traffic engineer, and I asked him about Starbucks on Westminster and Brookhurst. He said, "Well, that's an existing building." I said, "Well, the building I've owned's been doing that, and sometimes the traffic was so full in there, they'd have to go out and park on the street." Overflow. Not very often, but it happened. Never had an accident, never had anything happen. This is not right, and I want you to know that the sisters all will vote for you. And I may have it wrong, but I think it's 90% of Catholics vote for important matters, and they love their Sisters of the Loving Cross. So please, all you need to do is have the city attorney write up a draft to give it an automatic variance. They bring it in here, you vote on it, and it's done. And now you've told the staff, "Don't invent things that aren't right." Whatever the reasons are, I know not. But you need to act. They already had to dig at a great expense down the center of the garage to put a foundation in to build the new wall and then tear down the other. This is what it is right now. Why cut it in two? And I wasn't thinking, but this is the driveway here, I should have had that in there. When they get done building the new wall, that's what you'll have. That's how wide the garage will be for nothing but two people that want you to do it, because they have the power. I'm going to give you an example. If they worked for the state of California, and they come out and look at your steps in front, and you have an order to put in a handicap ramp, well, you know, "Council, we think you should have two ramps in front, because we have the power to do it." They're stepping way over their power. Well, you'd say, "Why? Well, there might be a handicap wanting to go up and one going down, that way they won't run into each other." That's crazy. Probably no one will ever use the handicap. So I ask you again to do something about it. May I take a minute to say something about marijuana?
Your time is up.
Pardon?
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much. God bless you all.
But I would like to ask for a staff memo on that, and this is the third or fourth time Mr. Hughes has come asking for solutions to his concerns.
Really quickly, this item went to Planning Commission, and he's complaining about Planning Commission conditions of approval that could have been appealed to city council, but they were not.
There was not an appeal?
No.
And it has expired?
Well, no.
The time for appeal?
The building permits have been issued. He's no longer the property owner, so at the time, the city is working with the current property owner. He's just in disagreement with the conditions after the fact.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. No. Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, thank you, mayor and city council. My name's Tom Gibbs. I'm an attorney counsel for the Emmeline Hogue Foundation, and I'm here on 7E. In advance of the hearing for the meeting tonight, I think it was yesterday, I submitted a letter. And the letter states Hogue Foundation's position and brings a status report... And the letter states Hoag Foundation's position and brings a status report to the council as to what's going on with respect to the property on Garden Grove Boulevard that you're all familiar with and also the reasons for the impasse and our view of the litigation that's, was initiated by Cathay Bank against the charitable Hoag Foundation and states why we think it not only lacks merit, but how it's really impeded, if not prevented, any ability of the Hoag Foundation and Cathay Bank to resolve. And the letter explains that. I'm here to answer any questions the council may have, whether now, I'll be around through the time the council considers 7E. Also, I observed that Cathay Bank's litigation council is here and if the council desires and Cathay Bank's council speaks and the council desires our response to that, I'm here. I have really nothing to add to the letter. I could repeat the letter if you haven't had a chance to read it, but it's really an important letter that the council authorized me to prepare for the city council's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. John Holm? And then Danny Deng.
Honorable Mayor Bowin, honorable members of the City Council, staff. My name is John Holm. My wife and I have been residents for 35 years. I'd like to talk about unintended consequences. We have before you the issue of the medical marijuana and it has some very good points. It does work with people that have cancer. It eliminates the nausea. It does work on people that need medical marijuana. But there are avenues to resolve that particular issue. On the other side, we have the commercial aspect. I've sent you each an email, this is a copy of it right here, and it's a front page from the Orange County Register that says there are twice as many unlicensed marijuana shops as legal ones. Your supposition is that the medical marijuana will be paid for by the license of the light, by the fees from the licensed medical shops. However, you're going to have a lot of unlicensed medical shops that the police department's going to have to run around and solve. I don't believe this is going to be a zero-sum game. It means you're going to be gaining money on the taxes that come in, but the majority of use will be non-taxed. And when you go to find them $1,000 a day, they'll be gone. They'll be someplace else. They'll move around the city. So, I ask you to consider the financial aspects of this equation. Unfortunately, you have a very complex issue on the front side. Do you help out people that need medical help? Do you move in conjunction with the state laws? But the binary issue is yes or no. You can only vote yes, you can only vote no. If in that equation, it doesn't balance out, you're a mathematician, that equation doesn't balance. You've got a whole series of analog inputs, much like a third order polynomial. You have coefficients against them and the results of a polynomial are analog, but you have a binary decision to make. I urge you to take a look at this and consider the financial aspects. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Danny Deng will be Michael Reamer. Danny Deng, Michael Reamer. Michael Reamer. Following Michael Reamer will be David Twist. And then Lisa Holmes.
Thank you, Council. My name is Michael Reamer and I wanted to talk a little bit about medical dispensaries. We've had pretty good conversations. My situation's a little bit different than some other people. I'm definitely in favor of regulating marijuana and having some dispensaries available specifically for people that need the medicine. I've got two family members that would fall into that classification, my wife being stage four metastatic breast cancer, my son being Army Infantry out with PTSD, honorable discharge. Both have benefited from the use of medical marijuana. The VA likes to give pills to people that are suffering from PTSD and it has not been very good for my son. In fact, he will not take them. It's been very beneficial. I understand the concerns that others are raising in regards to making sure that kids aren't able to get their hands on this and rightly so. Juveniles have no reason to be getting their hands on medical marijuana. It's for adults, not for maturing brains. But there has to be some type of avenue that would enable the people that really need the medicine to get the medicine in a safe and sane manner and allow those businesses to not be feeling like they're going to get in large, you know, amounts of trouble over small amounts of marijuana for medical purposes. Blacked-out buildings you're talking about, well, maybe if there wasn't such a, you know, feeling that you're going to get stomped on, that maybe people would come out in the light. And I'm sure that there's a lot of good things that can happen with medical marijuana. It just needs to be making sure that we look at all the different policy and procedures and make sure it's safe for the city, make sure it's safe for the citizens, make sure it's safe for the police. I don't buy into the gang wars and all these type of things. I think with proper regulation, you'll find that the incidences will be null. I think that some of the facts that people were talking about with incidences are unfounded. I think that Colorado and some of the places that have implemented medical marijuana have not found a higher increase in tragic incidence of automobile crashes or anything like that. So, I would, would just think, you need to think about this, use your heart, you know, everybody has family members that probably are ailing from some form and medical marijuana is definitely an answer for people. It doesn't have the consequences that painkillers are having on community, killing people. And I just hope that the council looks at this with open eyes and it should be a pretty good conversation to have. There is strong will on both sides and rightly so. It's a, it's something that the city should really look at. So, I thank you for your time and I hope you do the right thing, making considerations on this. Thank you.
Following David Twist, Lisa Holmes, then Robin McCarrillo.
Hi, Mayor, Council. My name is David Twist, resident of Garden Grove. And thank you, Mayor. I read your comment today in the Register about Obama giving lethal weapons to a government that the, that its own people don't trust. I read that today. Was that your comment today? Yeah, I read it today. Okay. Last week, I was at the Vector Board, we'll talk about mosquitoes for a few minutes. I was at Vector Board and I presented a solution to rid the mosquito problems once and for all. Presented to them the bat house. I purchased this on Amazon or you can buy it on eBay too for $15 to $20. This was made out of pine wood. You can buy pine or redwood. It houses about 12 bats. Though, we're not talking about the Dracula bat this big, we're talking about little brown bats about this size, that weigh the size of a penny, they weigh about, about the weight of a penny. This bat house now houses 12 bats. One bat will eat 4,500 mosquitoes a night. Imagine if you had 10 bats. 10 bats has 45,000 mosquitoes a night. Solution to the bat problem. Now, some people might think, "Well, what about rabies?" Well, according to a research study in the public health, it says here in Canada and America, in the last 40 years, 16 people died of bat-borne disease. That's over 16, that's over a 40-year period between America and Canada. Now, some people might think about, "Well, what about the bat poop or bat guano?" Well, it's the best fertilizer money can buy is bat guano. Now, other people might, now, the problem with the bat house is this. It has to be put up during the wintertime because bats in the wintertime are hibernating in their own little houses. Now, in the springtime, the little baby bats come out and they find their own homes, which will be like this new home here. And you have to put like bat scent on them, which you could buy, I bought some bat scent, you put it on the bottom here. And then the baby bats, when they're looking for their own home, they find a new home. So, you don't want to buy the bat house made out of cedar. A lot of people sell cedar bat houses because of the smell. It takes many years before a bat will inhabit a bat house made out of cedar. Now, bat house, bats have been on the decline in recent years due to pesticide spraying. Now, the problem with vector spraying at night, well, they continue they want to spray, is bats do their mosquito eating at night. If they aerial spray at night, there goes the bats. Now, it's been proven, I've said this before, it's been proven by the Harvard School of Public Health and Cornell University that aerial spraying doesn't work in killing the bats. It only destroys ecosystem. Now, we have to be careful when Vector says, "Well, we use small amounts of the insecticide duet or PBO." When they say small amounts, the small amounts they're using in the areas that they have sprayed in California, cancer has spiked in one to two years after they're spraying by them saying they use small amounts. That is fact and that has been proven by doctors in UCI and doctors from Sacramento that came down at that Vector Board meeting, proved that the smallest amount will give you cancer. Well, they say, "Well, we had eight people die last year of West Nile virus. Eight people last year of 3.5 million people." Well, you have eight people die of West Nile, but they're going to spray, if they do spraying, it's going to give how many thousands of people cancer when they do the spraying? So, this is one solution. I might add, Vector, I found out after I gave this presentation, I left an hour later, they said Vector rejected this. They said it doesn't work. Why do they shoot down every idea that people come up with and is assured, this has been a proven, it does work? So, I have to look at, why is Vector keep shooting down ideas like this that, okay, thank you.
Technically not done yet. Didn't mean to scare you there.
Oh, I'm, I'm, my time's up.
Okay, almost.
Oh, you want to check?
Okay. No, no, I, I'm good. Thank you.
My time's up, right?
I was just, I was just looking at the light right there and now your time is up.
Oh!
You know, very educational. Thank you. Lisa Holmes?
Hi. Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm here, I'm Lisa Holmes, I live in Stanton, not far from Barbara and quite a few other people who are here. It's already been addressed with the hotels and we've already talked with the city manager and I appreciate that. In the area, we're having a problem because the shopping center is up for sale, so that being an empty area with the clientele of the motels, which is not the sort of people you would like your daughter to bring home. Changing subject a little bit, the marijuana dispensary discussions. Right now, if anybody wants marijuana, you just have to go to Beach and Garden Grove Boulevard. It's, it's out there, we're seeing deals on the street, we're seeing people get high on the street. It's gotten really rough over there. So, I don't know the dispensary, you need to maybe focus on some other things. We have talked with her, thank you. But the marijuana, you're not stopping anyone from doing it by not having dispensaries. And you might as well tax and regulate it. I think it would be a great way for the city to maybe make some money. And I like the bat idea too. I like bats, sorry. Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
Robin McCarrillo, and then Dan Gleason.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff and Garden Grove residents. I just wanted to commend the city for the Garden Grove Pride event last night. It was nice to see there, Mayor. It was, it's a wonderful event that we do on an annual basis where we recognize the various different houses in the city.
Congratulations, you won the Waterwise Home of the Year.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we live at 9721 Lamson. We've been working on it for the last like four years, ripping out that grass and saving some money in the process, so drive by and enjoy it. We do. Okay, I just also, I was kind of inspired about four years ago when I saw that the city is redoing the medians and so that was how I kind of got started. And then I just attended with the mayor again, I'm not following you, I'm not stalking, at the Public Works re, just redid the, the park at Lamson, or excuse me, at Lamson and Brookhurst. So, the city yet again is saving some water and setting an example for the rest of the city, so that's awesome. We have some wonderful Public Works people. If you ever see them, wave and say, "Great job, Public Works," because that's what I do. Also, I just, in, in view of, just in general, when you're out and about driving, please be extra careful of pedestrians and particularly our Public Works people. Like, just, you know, kind of slow down. You see the cones, that should be like, slow down, people are working here, whether it's construction, whether it's our Public Works people, please just be careful, okay? I also want to do my little mosquito spiel, Orange County Mosquito Vector Control. I just want to encourage everyone, thankfully we have a nice audience here, to dump and drain any sources of standing water, whether it's in your backyard or it's in your home. Go and look and see those saucers underneath your pots. See if there's a sprinkler that's broken, anything that's any kind of water, like a, a pond, if you have a pond or a pool that's gotten green, that's going to breed mosquitoes. So, give Vector a call, we've got free little fish for you and we'll turn your green pond into a mosquito fish pond. So, also make sure that you repair your windows and door screens and wear some repellent when you go out in the evenings especially. So, the number for Vector Control is 714-971-2421. So, have a look at the website and get, get, you know, information that way or through Facebook. I also want to mention that on Saturday, June 18th, we're celebrating our 60th anniversary. So, everybody's got to come down. Garden Grove Village Green, come and enjoy the Garden Grove Unified School District's going to do some performances and you'll get to see some artwork and we're going to do another community mosaic, so I need some helping hands to add your own little tile on there. And then along Main Street, there'll be music and fun in the evening. So, the event starts at 4:00 till 8:00 at the park and then it goes a little later into the night along Main Street. So, I look forward to seeing everyone there and thank you so very much.
Following Dan Gleason, Stefan Boras-Sensulo.
Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. Again, I'm a member of the Garden Grove Drug Free Coalition and have been working in Garden Grove for the last nine years to reduce drug and alcohol abuse. And I've been participating in the forums you had on May 3rd and May 18th, looking at the medical marijuana dispensary issue. And I just read today the memo, the interdepartmental memo from Lisa Kim about sort of a summary of the task force findings. And I actually, I really liked it. I thought she did a nice job of capturing the negative consequences of having dispensaries in the community. She identified the increase in crime, burglaries, armed robberies, violent assaults, marijuana on school campuses, overdoses. She talked about the, the business owners that were concerned about being in the proximity of the dispensaries, car crashes and driving under the influence of marijuana. So, the question I have, with all of the negative consequences in this report, why would you folks want to allow dispensaries in Garden Grove and further burden the police department, the school district, the community-based organizations, the health system and the residents? And so, so one of the questions, one of the questions I have is, do you think that you have some sort of a responsibility to provide medicine to patients? Because I have some information that you might find interesting. California medical marijuana patients have been surveyed several times and this is what we know. A very small percentage of the people that use the dispensaries have these illnesses like HIV, cancer, multiple sclerosis and glaucoma. The overwhelming majority, the average medical marijuana patient in California is a 30-year-old man with a history of substance abuse. That's, that's just a fact. just a fact. And Scott Immler, who's the guy that wrote the Proposition 215, the Compassionate Care Act, uh, said, this is what, this is what he said, "We created Prop 215 so patients wouldn't have to deal with the black market profiteers, but today it's all about money. Most dispensaries operating in California are little more than dope dealers with storefronts." This is the guy that wrote the Compassionate Care Act. So, the other question, I'm wondering if you think that the tax revenue is going to help, uh, solve some of your budget problems? In your report, your own staff said they couldn't get any of the local communities to give them a straight answer about what they could anticipate in terms of increased tax revenue. The other thing they pointed out is that these guys are cut off from the traditional banking system. They run essentially cash businesses. And so how do you figure you're going to be able to know if you're getting your fair share of the tax revenue? So I think these are a couple of problems that I hope you guys will consider when you go forward and make this decision. Thank you.
Following Stefan Borst-Sensulo, Gloria Bram.
Good evening, Your Honor and Council. Um, I actually want to come up and agree with some of the, the antagonists for my, for the medical marijuana movement here. Uh, to, the people who brought up that the current dispensary operators are little more than dope dealers with a, uh, with a storefront. Unfortunately, I have to agree with them right now. Um, the way the Prop 215 was originally passed and the collective defense resulted from it, and the kind of miasma that we now are dealing with as an industry and as a public, as a public function, uh, until November of last year, when the Medical Marijuana Safety and Regulatory Act was passed in the state, we were operating in a complete void. What this meant was, in effect, uh, because of legislators and not this esteemed body, when I say this, I speak very generally, local legislators and state legislators had an impossible task to be able to handle. They were asked to provide for compassionate, for compassionate medicine for people in desperate need, people with multiple sclerosis, veterans coming back, with a frankly unworkable and racist kind of, uh, uh, federal system that was, because of the sclerosis at the federal end, was unable to be fixed for the last 19 years despite having the Compassionate Use Act on the books. What this meant was that local legislators were forced in many cases to be able to create an entirely new regulatory system, something that was out of their normal purview of jurisdiction, and was, was not within their regular experience of legislating, in contradiction of both federal and state law at the time. What this did was it forced lawyers, persons like myself, but previous to me, to be able to create this regulation through expensive litigation against cities. Most of what we kind of regard as the collective, including the collective defense, but any of the blacked-out windows, the setbacks, almost all of these things were never put into statute. Instead, they were created by a series of, of very expensive law, uh, legal cases. What we're asking for now instead, especially in, in light of the fact that the state has finally passed world-class style regulations for this particular, for the dispensing of this drug, excluding the banking first, uh, aspect of it, which is being fixed not only by private, uh, by private solutions, but by the CARES Act currently within the, within, being considered by the Congress. Um, this does provide a very good regulatory kind of framework for setting forth and addressing many of the concerns that your residents have brought forward. Uh, that's not to say that not all of the information that you have been provided is entirely accurate or not based in mythologies. The emergency room visits at 400 a week, or 400 a, a year, sound very scary, except when you take into the fact that overdosing on marijuana means a nap, and 400 a year compels in comparison to the 9,000 people who die a year as a result of food poisoning. Yet I don't see anybody here looking to ban pork. Additionally, if we're going to be taking our cues from other foreign jurisdictions, I totally, I would actually recommend that you look perhaps at Portugal, which has reduced overall drug use through their decriminalization. And not from somebody working in Thailand, where possession of marijuana is a death penalty offense, uh, and they still remain as one of the largest traffickers for both opiates and illegal marijuana in the entire world. So obviously, what they're doing is not exactly working. Uh, additionally, too, while I completely respect the opinions of your police chief, he does actually have a very strong incentive to be able to, to, uh, create a legislative veto over your own decision-making. The man, and frankly, every police officer in this country, has had a very inflated budget over the last 40 years, specifically for the issue of drug abatement. Uh, as this becomes a more normalized and regulated task, it's going to be falling more on the responsibility and jurisdiction of your other civil authority, which means frankly, his position and his particular way of, his tactical way of addressing this issue is going to be far less important. You're going to be able to hire more inspectors, more city officials in other particular departments where this need's going to be more, more necessary. Finally, for those who are, for your residents who are saying that they, that the veterans and the seniors and the children with epilepsy, uh, can find their marijuana elsewhere, fortunately, that's not the case. The only place in the, in Orange County that has licensed dispensaries is, is Santa Ana, and nowhere is, is advocating for, has legal delivery at the moment. Everybody who, every patient who does use delivery inside of Orange County, or frankly, most of LA County, is doing so in violation of the law. So what we're asking for is, please, stop criminalizing our patients. Stop forcing them to go to the black market because it's the only source of accessibility for them. Please, regulate this. Make this safe. Make stores that are checking IDs. We agree with you. We do not want marijuana in the hands of children who do not have serious illnesses and have not talked to their doctors yet. This is not the goal of the marijuana industry, and I think frankly, it's kind of defamatory to assume so. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you. I know this is a very passionate issue, but please do not disparage one another. Please do not curse in these chambers. I can hear you from up here. You know who you are. Thank you, Gloria Bram. Following Gloria Bram will be Charles Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor Yen. I don't know how to pronounce your name. I'm sorry.
It's pronounced "Win." It's monosyllabic, "Win."
Win, okay.
Thank you for asking.
Uh, this is the first time I've had an opportunity to speak on behalf of regulating marijuana dispensaries. I know more people addicted to oxycodone and hydrocodone, morphine, heroin, alcohol, and nicotine than are addicted to marijuana. It is totally impossible to die from an overdose of marijuana. Now, I'm taking four different medications unfortunately for anxiety, for PTSD, after the LA riots in, um, 91. They are more addictive than marijuana. But my doctor will not prescribe marijuana to me, because he's about 15 years older than me, I think. I'm 70 years old. I've had four experiences in my early twenties smoking marijuana. And I do remember one very distinctly, where I was at my sister's house in Coconut Grove, Florida, and had just gotten out of the hospital. My sister, a flower child, uh, wanted to treat me and gave me a marijuana cigarette. When somebody knocked on the door, I could not believe how alert and aware I became. I saw that knock on the door as a threat, and I responded appropriately. You can't do that with alcohol. You can't do that with oxycodone, hydrocodone, morphine, or heroin. For God's sake, regulate this industry at least as much as cigarettes are reg- uh, regulated. I mean, I'm addicted to nicotine and have been often, uh, since I was 12 years old. And I'm now 70, and I'm still smoking. So all I ask is that you consider rationally, who's telling you what? Because you're hearing things that are not true. I would rather go to a medical marijuana dispensary than to go to a corner where drugs are being sold illegally by criminals and gang members and others that I will not trust with my life. Thank you.
Follow, are you done?
That's it.
Following Charles Mitchell, Maureen Blackman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Charles Mitchell. I live at 8701 Lomé Avenue in Garden Grove. The issue of marijuana is one that I find very difficult to come to grips with because I fully agree with people having illnesses, being able to access something that will relieve their symptoms. Recreational marijuana is a different matter entirely. Have any of you ever had the experience of having your car hit by a drunk driver? Now, I have. But unfortunately, the police can use means to test someone for alcohol. But at this point, there is not anything that they can use effectively to test someone who is over the limit as far as influence from marijuana. And there are influences. Many, many years ago, I, with my wife, was traveling around the country attending bridge tournaments. One time, returning from the dinner break, I saw a couple of our friends from the local bridge club in the parking structure, and they were smoking marijuana. They asked if I'd like to try it. I said, "Okay." So I took a couple of puffs. Well, I found out what the real effect of marijuana is. It slows down your perspective of time. I went on in and we started playing bridge, and it seemed to me that it took forever to play a card. But that wasn't the case. Everything was moving according to actual time, but in my mind, everything slowed down. So if you're under the influence of marijuana and you're driving, your sense of time is distorted, so that you may think you have plenty of time to get through an intersection before the light changes, but you may not. And that's where the real problem comes in, because people do not see things as clearly as they should when they're under the influence of any substance, whether it's alcohol or marijuana. On another note, we are selling pins at City Hall to, uh, honor our 60th anniversary. And I'm wondering, why aren't we selling them on Main Street? That's going to be one of the focuses of our celebration. Perhaps we should be selling the pins in the Chamber of Commerce office. That way, people who visit Main Street can stop and buy a pin. I want to congratulate and commend the Garden Grove and Westminster Fire Departments. Unfortunately, last Saturday, we had a situation that required the services of paramedics for my wife. The two departments showed up. They were extremely dedicated and successful in helping her through the problem, getting her, uh, stabilized and into the ambulance and over to the emergency room. And the personnel there took care of the problems, and she's now home and doing fine. But I just want to thank these professionals for doing an outstanding job. Thank you.
Following Maureen Blackman, Stephanie Klopstein, and then Justin Fan.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, staff. First, I'd like to apologize to the gentlemen that left, but, um, I don't think I've ever, well, Toby probably did swear in council, but I don't think I did, but it just sort of slipped out. When, this is, this whole issue has gotten really ludicrous. When an attorney, one has more threats of lawsuits, claims that the police department is only pushing this because they need to do their more work for themselves. I mean, it, it just came out. I'm sorry. I couldn't handle it. This is not to me about-
It's okay. It happens.
It does. Thank you. I appreciate your repenting me on that. This is not about marijuana, good, bad, legal, illegal. It's a resource issue. I see no reason at this point in time that we have to push the issue. If this new route law comes in and we don't get tax revenue for six months because we're trying, along with every other state, city in California, to figure out how to make it work, okay, we'll deal without tax revenue for six months. It's 2018. It's a year and a half from now. I don't feel like we have to spend the resources. Right now, we have an amazing new city manager, a new economic developer. We have the Great Wolf. We have Nickelodeon, hopefully, Brookhurst Triangle, cottages and bungalows, district dean. We have amazing things to look forward to. I don't really see why we need to take the resources and put them towards an effort that we don't really need. I was going on the, um, with Palm Springs, and I started looking, okay, how does this all think, this thing all work? We're talking about applications, alarms, certification, background checks, fingerprints, credit checks, permits, taxes, interest. All of it seemed to fall mostly on the city manager's job in Palm Springs. Um, they have to see if the applicant is hiring people of good moral character, food product regulations, health department, annual fees, zoning, coding, disciplinary for actions for violations. Who's going to keep the video? Who's going to put the CUPs? Who's going to put the relocation abilities, electrical needs, showcase regulations, window? It's, why? We don't have to do this now. It's a complicated issue. I understand it. I've been around since the 60s, 60s, probably saw more pot than any of you guys have. I just don't get it. I don't think we need to push the issue now. I'd like to see us move forward with more positive things. Thank you.
Following Stephanie Klopstein, Justin Fan, and then Tony Flores.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Stephanie Klopstein, and I'm just bringing forth a friendly reminder that our annual meeting and backyard brunch, the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association's annual meeting and backyard brunch, will be Saturday, June 4th. The doors open at 10:30, and speakers start at 11:00. Uh, some of the speakers will be our mayor. He'll be opening our program. Uh, the police and fire chief will be there. Our city manager, Scott Stiles. Hopefully, all of our council members will be in attendance. Dr. Gabriella Moffey will be speaking from the Garden Grove School District. Um, our Public Works Director, Bill Murray, will also be there, and, um, others. And we hope that you guys bring some money with you, so that you can participate in our raffle, and join and become a member if you'd like. We're also very excited that Doug's Downtown Grill will be offering our brunch, so that should be wonderful. Um, if you want to see the flyer, it's on our Facebook page. Uh, you can also get more information there. Um, you don't even need to RSVP. You can, to Maureen Blackman, if you'd like to. Um, but we just encourage families to, to come and attend and have a good time. Thank you.
Following Justin Fan will be Tony Flores, and then Alan Bram.
Hi, my name is Justin Fan. Um, I want to say good evening to the mayor and the council member. Um, I'm resident of, um, Garden Grove. Um, I'm a patient for myself. I have sleep apnea, and I just, just can't sleep. I try Ambien, many times, like, doesn't work. Until I met, well, this is a journey for my daughter. I never touched marijuana in my whole life. And I spoke in, in, uh, at the community hall meeting before, and likewise. So, my daughter have a, a disorder where she has a, a, a Mickey button because she doesn't eat. And we went extensively, all kinds of doctor, traditional medicine, you name it. It doesn't work. So I'm just looking outside, okay, what else can I do? And when I looked at it, it's, um, you know, we see in the videos, I- And when I looked at it, it's, you know, we see in the videos when people smoke marijuana, they get the munchies. So I researched into it and find out that, hey, cancer patients who, after radio treatment, chemotherapy, just their appetite's gone, and they use cannabis to stimulate that appetite. So I'm going, huh, this is outside the box, and, you know, let's find out. So I agree with the resident here that, you know, some of the existing business and prior is all about the money. Because when I went to talk for, for my daughter, seven, at that time, she was six. I came in and go, hey, I need a medical card, so I want to understand more. I want to visit dispensary around here, see what they have. They gladly, here's 80 bucks. Take it. Right? Fine, I got a card. Absolutely, done. But when I brought my daughter, they go, uh, I can't do, she's too young. I say, okay, can you help me? You're a doctor. I'm going, no, no, I can't do anything, sorry. After 10 or so doctors, I kind of figured it out. So that's what, that's what we're talking about, is the industry as it is. Right? So what we're trying to move forward is something where that's better regulated. That's what we're aiming for. So the only way to find a solution, I literally had to fly to Washington to talk to a medical group up there that been around for 20, 30 years, I'm sorry, 20 years advocating medical cannabis by Harvard doctors, researchers, you name it. Right? So they finally was able to introduce me to a doctor, but I had to fly to Florida to meet with them, and then lo and behold, the doctor's here in LA. Okay, so I literally traveled all around, the doctor's in LA. Right? So as I sit in the community hall, and I sit and listen, I mean, I'm, I'm a resident here. I, I done a lot of stuff in the community. I mean, when we went to, I digress, I'm sorry. The whole, the whole point is, what I'm trying to look for is a credible location where I can find medicine, not only for myself, but for my daughter. Right now, as you heard, one of the gentlemen spoke here, the only legal place in Orange County is in Santa Ana, and all they have is dispensary there. Now, if I'm going to get medicine to give it to my daughter, I want to know where it came from, not some guy who just processed in the backyard for a quick buck. Right? So what I'm asking for is, as we move forward in this, it is a complicated solution. It is a complicated, complex, is there's no right or wrong answer. You can't just completely ban a subject, ban it, it doesn't work. As proven over years, it doesn't work. And you can't completely go the other way either, 100%, everything goes. Right? The solution is somewhere in the middle, hence the challenge you guys have. Right? And the state already adopted the laws and regulation to help you guide there. So all we have to do is look up in Sacramento. Right? It's our capital. They already have legal running businesses up there. So why can't we copy or at least spend the time to learn both lesson, success lesson and failure lesson, so we can prevent it at our city? That's all. I mean, at least look into it and find a credible solution for everyone, not just, you know, the majority. So, thank you.[800.51][800.51](applause)
Thank you. Following Tony Flores, Alan Bram, and then Lisa Kim.
Good evening, council staff. I'm Tony Flores. I had a few stats here myself, but most of the speakers have covered quite a bit, so I'm not going to cover that ground. No matter which side you're on, obviously, there's some compelling arguments. Myself, I'm not for it. We have a problem at the federal level with it right now, but with the law being what it is. The, the problem that we do have here in Garden Grove, though, is the fact that we don't have enough police officers to enforce the law right now. Back in, what, excuse me, January 26, 2016, I was here talking about the low numbers of officers. Right now, we're at 1985 levels of police officers, and the register came out with a, and I think you folks have already seen this, but we're at 40 to 49% crime, crime rate right now in Garden Grove. We simply just don't have the resources to handle regular crime, not to mention what's going to come along with this marijuana thing. There's no certainty about it. In Garden Grove, we just cannot do it with the numbers that we have. And I respectfully disagree with the, some of these speakers that disparage our police officers for making the money they do. They do a hell of a job. Anybody who's worked in law enforcement, I can tell you, it's not just somebody take off the street. Most of these folks that are talking about the officers, what they talk about, would wet themselves if they're in the situations I've been in and what other officers have been in. See, that's a good example of our youth, ignorant, inexperienced, not listening to what's going on. Yeah, see, there they go again. That, that's perfect. Are you going to caution them, mayor?
Please continue. You know, folks, order, and just be respectful.
Yeah. Thank you, mayor. Don't get so strong on them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any case...
Please continue.
Yeah, I'm going to. Any case, you know, you don't, for, for, for a person who's a Vietnamese person and who's gay, you, you have no tolerance at all. You should be an example of tolerance, and, and you're not. Boo it, but, but I'm telling you, you need to set an example. Any case, let me just finish here.
It's okay, folks. This is what we have to go through. This is what politicians go through. It's okay. Please continue.
Politicians, that's right. Any case, so getting back to what the, the chief of police had to say, I think we need to take a look at what he's saying. He's the professional. He has the information, and I think we need to back him up on this, especially in a time right now where we don't have the officers to handle the crime that we have right now. In closing, this weekend, we're going to be honoring our veterans, Memorial Day. Please consider honoring those veterans, especially those who have served overseas in combat. It's because of them that people like me can stand here and demand better from politicians like you. Thank you.[995.25][995.25](applause)
Following Alan Bram, Lisa Kim.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, attendees. I spoke at the last council meeting discussing marijuana, and I want you to know I'm a single father of a 13-year-old boy, and my number one concern is that he doesn't use drugs. That being said, I think you should...
We're going to take a break.
We're going for a short recess, Jeff.
Okay, we're back. We're back. Alan Bram.
Hello.
We'll start the clock again for you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, your honor, council members, staff, and attendees. I'm a Garden Grove resident for over 20 years, a homeowner, and a single, full-time parent of a 13-year-old boy in the Garden Grove Unified School District. I speak to my son about pressures of right and wrong, the values of honesty and respect for others, tobacco, alcohol, drug use, along with other major issues. And we even watch the debates together, both Republican and Democratic debates. I just wanted to touch on, I was reading some of the thoughts you were considering towards regulation, and one of the items is background checks, and I was noticing that it seemed a little bit over-regulations. I, I don't think that you do background checks on restaurant bar owners, bartenders, people that do, sell liquor to, at liquor stores, and I just wish you would treat these businesses as businesses like you would anybody else. Because if you make these rules and regulations too stringent, you're just going to stimulate the black market that currently exists in our city right now. Also, on your crime concerns, you were referencing a NHTSA study from 2009. There was a more common or more recent study that came out in 2012, conducted in Virginia Beach. It was a 20-month period where 3,000 drivers were involved with crashes, plus a comparison group of 6,000 drivers who didn't crash. The research teams were responding 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and what they found is the most frequent drug use was marijuana. It was detected in 7.6% of the crash drivers, and it was also found in 6.1% of people that weren't involved in crashes. What that seems is alcohol was also detected in 5% of the crashes involving drivers and 2.7% of the group that wasn't being involved in crashes. It says here that although marijuana-positive drivers were overrepresented in the crash-involved population, when researchers controlled the demographic factors, age, gender, ethnicity, and alcohol use, they didn't find any increase in crash risks associated with the marijuana list. So I just want you to, you know, consider all the facts when you're considering regulation, and don't use these older studies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Following Lisa Kim will be Mark Wagner.
Good evening, mayor and councilmen. We're here again. Thank you for bringing us back. We, Cathay Bank, we agree with the findings and the summary that was provided to the staff or to the councilmen. And as you may have heard earlier, Cathay Bank had to file litigation as a last resort because we reached an impasse with their development and the project. We are fully committed to building the project to enhance the community, and we have not wavered in one bit from that. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them later, but we request the continuance of the demolition order. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Mark Wagner, Winston, Winston Yang.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. I'm Dr. Wagner. I'm from OC Comprehensive Care Clinic in San Ana, California, 515, Carrillo Park Drive. I was a resident of Westminster while I was attending UC Irvine undergrad before I went to UCLA Medical School. I'm a 30-year veteran of emergency medicine. I'm board certified. I was one of the first few years of board certification emergency medicine. I did some for over 30 years. My clinic in San Ana now, Orange OC Comprehensive Care, I primarily see addicted patients. The most of them are addicted to narcotic medicines at the hands of their doctors. I think you may have seen the expose two weeks ago in LA Times about how Purdue Pharma fudged data about Oxycontin and made known 190,000 people die of overdose attributed to that drug alone. I now recommend cannabis to patients with addictions as an exit drug. I was at a conference in Northern California in San Rafael, Dominican University. It was the second of two conferences they've had in the last two years. The first was in November of 2004, the science behind the hype. These are international experts in the field of cannabis science. I was just there this weekend, science the truth. Ethan Russo of Phytex was there. He has actually discovered the endocannabinoid system approximately 20 years ago. Raphael McCollum may speak next year. He actually discovered THC back in 1964. We need to know more about this science. I'm willing to answer questions of the council. I'm willing to work with the council, with other respectable professionals, to get a decent lab with a decent dispensary, with a decent physician like myself who gives appropriate medical cannabis evaluations. There is much science on this. The endorphin system regarding narcotics is very well-known. It turns out that the endocannabinoid system is more important in that system for our well-being. The majority of patients using cannabis have insomnia, they have anxiety, PTSD. I've done studies at the, at the state and federal level. I have written major healthcare legislation for the last 30 years, including MTLA, COBRA. I assisted on Hillary's healthcare emergency medical services. She kicked us out of her conferences. I worked against Obamacare. I was in the House Representatives the night that Obamacare was passed into law, fighting against it. I have been in the Committee of 12, fighting very strongly against it, side by side with Rand Paul, Cory Booker, with Dana Rohrbacher. All of these congressmen and senators have legislation at this time. Two of my amendments to the new addiction treatment that President Obama told Congress to pass, it was passed by the House, it's now in the Senate, two of my amendments regarding the use of medical cannabis were stricken from that bill because Big Pharma doesn't know how to handle cannabis yet. But we experts can actually set up a lab, test the product, give the appropriate medicine to the patients. Some patients with cancer require high THC, with high CBD. Some require no THC, such as hormone-responsive cancer. I could go on for hours discussing this, but I am available to answer questions. I know there's a lot of angst about it. I feel it. I've been there. I'm a cardiac arrest survivor four times. I have a defibrillator. I have a deadly systolic heart failure. I was told five years ago I had one year to live. I'm still here, and I'm kicking. Okay? I do alternative medicine, and I'll tell you, pharmaceuticals kill. With Rand Paul, I was one of the physicians who discovered that there are, in the average of 25 veterans per day suiciding in America because they're put on Effexor or Albutrin, and that's what's killing our young people. Because if you look at the pharmacology of these medicines, you understand that the pharmaceutical companies have been lying to us. So I'm very passionate about this. I'm also very sleep deprived right now. I started my day in Vancouver at 3:00 AM to fly back and have a full day at clinic, and then I was just notified 30 minutes before that there was a meeting tonight. So I am open to discuss this issue with you from an expert's point of view, and I understand the community's angst. But if you do it right, other counties such as Marin, I was just there this weekend, and there, one of their city council persons was there, and she said that they're going to be doing it right up there. If we do what Marin County's doing, we'll get it right. I'm here to assist you. Thank you.[1609.45][1609.45](applause)
Thank you. William Yang. Following William Yang will be Cherie Allen, and then Steel Smith. William Yang? Cherie Allen, and then Steel Smith. Following Steel Smith will be Sue Nguyen. And then Eric Alsba. Cherie Allen?
Let me apologize first for standing up and being inappropriate. I know this is a really sensitive issue, and it really is for me. I'm a dual-diagnosis cancer survivor. I've had a radical neck dissection, a tracheotomy, a reconstructed voice box, and removal of my vocal cords. I'm 48 years old, and I can barely function without medication. The pain pills that are given to me, the hormones that I take for my treatment, they keep me up, they make me sick. They're not healthy. They're not good for me. I'm not thriving. The medical cannabis helps me be mobile. It helps me stand here and look healthy when I'm really not. If I didn't have the medicine that I travel out of town for, I wouldn't be able to eat, I wouldn't be able to sleep, and I probably wouldn't be alive today. I have been struggling with this disease since 2011, and my surgeons at UCI, they don't know what to do with me, but they promised that they wouldn't give up. And please, if you could just consider, everything we do is regulated. We have to come to a reasonable agreement with each other because people are dying. My quality of life is zero. It takes me hours to look like I'm not sick because I try so hard to be normal like all of you. It's hard to eat. It's hard to swallow. Stage IV thyroid cancer turned into papillary carcinoma that has spread throughout every lymphatic system in my neck. Jack the Ripper could be so happy if this was his work. I shouldn't be here, and medicine helps me. It helps a lot of people that are like me. So if you could... So if you could please keep this on your desk for a minute longer and think about it, I could be your sister, or your daughter, or someone that you love. And you have to reconsider and stop arguing because people die without this treatment. Thank you for your time.
Following Steel Smith, Sue Nguyen. Mr. Smith?
Sorry about that. Mayor, thank you everybody for conducting these ongoing meetings. Last time I was here, I kind of got out of my box a little bit and kind of addressed the crowd. And tonight, I think I'm just going to advise you guys of kind of where I've been over the last week, kind of thinking about this trajectory and wanting to see it go the way that it is, which is to vote to the people, which is the way it should happen. I understand that our police chief sent out an email to the businesses in the community that was kind of slanted in its tone. And for that, I wanted to make sure that Mrs. Allen comes tonight so that the council can kind of hear from one patient at least, one that we're familiar with, as to her situation and the realities of safe access in Garden Grove. And for that, I wanted to bring this letter from our lawyer that I'd like to give to Scott Stiles, and I'll read it to the council, is, "Dear Mr. Stiles and members of the city council, this letter is written on behalf of Cherie Allen, who is a qualified patient under the medical marijuana program. This letter is written in support of action item 7B, which is on tonight's agenda. Pursuant to this item, Ms. Allen supports staff recommendation to commence the process to enact regulations and revise the municipal code to establish land use standards and other business regulations under which medical marijuana businesses could operate. Ms. Allen suffers from severe thyroid cancer. Due to her health condition, it is extremely difficult for her to obtain marijuana for her medicinal needs. To that end, she is now required to travel to Santa Ana as a Garden Grove resident in order to obtain her medicine. However, the regulation as proposed would alleviate these difficulties. As a longtime resident of Garden Grove and as a qualified patient, Ms. Allen does believe that this action item should be passed at tonight's meeting. If the Garden Grove Council cannot provide safe access to those who are in need of medical marijuana, Ms. Allen intends to seek all legal remedies available to her in order to preserve her rights, including an American with Disabilities lawsuit against the city of Garden Grove to be filed within 30 days." Here's the letter for Mr. Stiles. Thank you.
Following Sue Nguyen, Eric Alsba, and then Teresa Smith. Sue Nguyen? Eric Alsba?
I'm Eric Alsba. I have clients that reside here in Garden Grove. I listen to a lot of speakers and I don't want to go through any of their statistics. I see that the council has a recommendation to tax and get on a ballot a 15 percent measure, that you also recommend directing staff to begin drafting regulations immediately, and that you want to maintain a ban until regulations actually issue. I just found out about this meeting three hours ago. I went onto Weed Maps at 5:30. I looked up Santa Ana and Garden Grove as examples for storefronts and delivery, mobile storefronts. There was 20 of each in both cities. In your agenda, there were materials that showed that the Santa Ana regulations have banned all but six dispensaries. They had a lottery last year. And some people have just now, it's taken over a year, under those regulations to actually open a dispensary. So please keep in mind when you do pass your regulations, to keep it simple. There's a lot of, people are saying regulations have issued in California at the state level. That's incorrect. It's going to take another year, year and a half for regulations to actually issue, and it's going to take a long time to actually implement those rules and come up with forms and have people be legal. At this point in time, I think you need to pass some regulations, but keep it simple. You're talking about environmental CEQA analysis. California has, in the law, passed recommendations to research pesticide testing and things of that nature. The federal government hasn't done it. We don't know what that is and people have talked about the lack of resources in the city. So I'm advising you to not try and do comprehensive regulations at this point in time. Do something smart, keep some simple regulations, and you'll get a better result and you'll be able to take care of the patients here. Thank you.
Teresa Smith?
I really wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so I have nothing prepared. Steel Smith is my husband, the tall guy, the passionate one. Medical cannabis actually saved his life. We do medical cannabis in a pill. The only reason why he's here past 2003 is because of medical cannabis. When he got diagnosed with a rare illness, which is a wicked cousin to Crohn's disease, they gave him three years to live at the most. That was if they had half of his stomach taken out, and it's called a vagotomy, I think. We are very passionate about what we do. We lost our business back then because of his illness. It created Idrasil, which is our pill. We see a lot of patients and have over the last 10 years. And, you know, I know you guys are talking about mostly low-hanging fruit. I totally understand that. I don't smoke, I don't drink, but I do know what it does for people. And you couldn't go wrong if you at least regulated, the dispensaries made a certain amount of them. I know low-hanging fruit is not what you want, and it's not what anyone deserves, but it is a medicine. It's not just recreational. It really is a medicine and it keeps people alive. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more cards? Okay, great. Okay, we're going to take a brief recess.[1083.83]
Reconvening here. We have some consent items. I'll entertain a motion.
Move the consent color.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion passed with five yes votes.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm gonna take the liberty to move forward. Seven E, is there a staff report on that? Sorry for the surprise there.
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor. I think Mr. Hill's gonna be here in a second.
Seven E is a Galleria. I can actually do a really quick.
Okay, please. Oh, seven E, I'm sorry. I thought we were.
A quick introduction. If City Council recalls back in December, the City Council continued this item until today in order to allow the parties additional time to, you know, negotiate and some sort of restart of construction on the Galleria project or Lotus Plaza project. So it's on the agenda, being continued. The report basically just says this is a continued item and we attached for you the prior reports that have been provided to the City Council for the last two years. So if you have any specific questions, I believe that the legal representatives for both parties that have interest on the property are present today. If you have any questions for me, or if you have any questions for legal counsel for the parties, we'll be happy to answer your questions.
Okay, so the demolition order has been in place since July 2nd, 2013?
Yes, and what that demolition order indicated was that they had one year to restart construction. If they did not restart construction within that one year, then they needed to demolish the structure. So as of 2014, they needed to commence demolition.
Okay. And now it is 2016, May. And we've considered this item multiple times. And I think that the best thing to do is to authorize the city attorney to commence action, to enforce the notice and order, to have a court order, the abatement of the nuisance, and appoint a receiver to ensure removal of the unfinished structures on the site. This is not only a public nuisance, it is a safety issue. I see that there is graffiti at the very top of the building. That means that someone's climbing up there. Someone could fall off that building. If they're climbing up there to put graffiti up there, most likely they're doing it at night. There's no light on that structure. Not only is it an eyesore for our city, it is a danger to the public. Not only that, it is an annoyance to the surrounding businesses. We received a complaint from your neighbor next door in the Festival Plaza where the new paint shop is. And also, we're having a new development across the street from that. This is something that keeps coming back. And I'm just expressing the sentiments of the community, the business community, the public, and also for the safety of our community. I don't know who's putting graffiti up there. They shouldn't be doing that. The last thing I want is for someone to fall off that building. It's not secure, that's for sure. So, I also think that this impasse, something's wrong in communication. That's not our issue as a city. Our responsibility is to keep the city safe and to move things along. This demolition order has been in place since 2013. It's time we enact this, and we should not have any more delay. And if that influences the judge's decision in your case, that you've brought upon one another, fine. But that's not my interest. My interest is for the public safety, for the local businesses, and for all of our community. Like I said before, we've heard this issue again and again, particularly during election years. We have more important things to discuss. This should not be the focus of our city. It's blight? You know, it's, it's in competition with, with everything else in our city. It's our 60th anniversary, and we have this building, this ugly rusty skeleton of a building in our city. I'm tired of that, and I know so many people are as well. So it's about time. I am tired of hearing about the bickering and "let's just wait and see, let's just wait and see." No, no. We have laws, and the laws have been violated, and it is time to enforce. So that's where I stand. Would love to hear my colleagues' input, and this is the time for that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I've heard this delay tactic over and over again, and I think they're asking till July to hopefully resolve it. I know how the legal system works, and that's probably not gonna be the case. We'll probably see continuance after continuance, probably till you and I are off the dicer mayor. I just wanna ask our city attorney, though, what is your, not to put you on the spot, Omar, but what is your legal assessment of this request to let it ride until July to hopefully get resolution? Do you agree with me that that's probably not gonna be the case, or do you have a different opinion? And please be, be, you know, be frank with it.
Well, I don't have a crystal ball. The July dates are simply motions that could be this positive, but then again, the court can rule otherwise. So frankly, I'm not sure that July, this matter would be resolved.
And, and I would agree with you, Mayor. I mean, enough time has passed to where basically, I really had hoped that we can, you know, do something good with the structure, but I don't know how much longer we can go, especially with people climbing, you know, these structures at night. If they fall, they can sue not only the owner of the property, but the city being put on notice that, hey, this is dangerous, and we're standing idling by.
That's right. Colleagues? If there's no more input, I'd like to move to authorize, Mr. Jones?
I'd like to first ask that question. Somebody did fall off the building. What liability would the city have?
The city would not have liability, but the property owners would.
The city may not have liability, in your opinion, city attorney, however, that does not mean that they would not sue our city. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So I'm going to move to authorize the city attorney.
Speak.
Sure, I'll make this motion first, then we can continue the discussion if there's a second. Moving to authorize the city attorney to commence an action and enforce a notice and order to have a court order, the abatement of the nuisance, and appoint a receiver to ensure removal of the unfinished structures on the site. Like a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I just would argue that, well, for starters, I'd say we're all 110% on the same page that we would like to see something happen with this, whether it comes down or gets finished or whatever. It's an eyesore to all of us as residents. I, I just firmly believe that this would be a bad tactical move from the city to insert ourselves in the middle of this thing. I think if we tried to pursue in a demolition order, I don't think the building's actually gonna come down. I think it's just gonna end up getting the city in a position where we would then have to spend a bunch of legal costs trying to fend off an injunction or whatnot that comes next. So I think there's almost assured reaction from these parties if we tried to pursue a demolition. So I would, I would like to delay it again. I would like to see what happens in July, and I'm actually more optimistic that something could come out of that.
Speaking of costs, how much are we looking at as far as going through with this injunction process?
Six thousand to ten thousand.
Our estimate is between six thousand and ten thousand dollars. And again, what we're asking, we're applying for the court to appoint a receiver to finalize and enforce the notice and order. So it's not for our office to litigate, it's simply to put together the application for the court to then take over jurisdiction over the property.
What's the worst case? I'm sorry, real quick. I just wanna read the way that's actually worded. Commencement of an abatement action will cost the city an estimated six thousand to ten thousand. However, the cost could increase depending on the party's cooperation or opposition to the action. So that's an open checkbook.
Mr. Beard?
That's what, that's where my question leading to. What is the worst-case scenario? Let, let's just say one party, or both party oppose to the, you know, to the basin, the demolition.
Well, you know, at this point, I'm not sure that we would litigate too long. We would come back to City Council and report at that time and provide you options at that time. So I mean, I, we're committed to doing that. You know, the, the parties are already in litigation, but this is completely separate from that. You know, we're, this, this action is more in our regulatory capacity. Their action is more civil, contract issues between themselves. Frankly, I mean, frankly, I'm not sure.
You're not asking my question?
Yes.
You're not answering my question?
Well, the direct answer is that I'm not sure what type of opposition they could have, because this is nuisance per se. They're in direct violation of the direct order under the California Building Codes.
All right, but I, I understand what you're saying, I'm a servant, but the issue that, that I need to decide on is, you know, if they would like to oppose, and let's just say the judge agreed that, that we would give us the order to demo it, can they appeal?
Yes, they can appeal that.
So, so if they appeal, the cost would be more, right? So, so I'm asking you, what is the worst-case scenario? Because I need to understand what the cost implication could be.
If they appeal, that's another action, and I will come back to you for authority to participate in that appeal. The city can, that point decide not to appeal.
Can, can you give us a ballpark estimate? Because I do not like to vote on something that I do not have the, you know, have some, you know, reasonable estimate for the, you know, what it could potentially cause us. Right now, you quote that between six and ten thousand dollars. If they appeal, what, what could be the cost?
We have not ever dealt with an appeal of these orders. All of the applications that we have actually submitted have cost between six to ten thousand dollars. They have not been opposed, especially an order like this one, when it's nuisance per se, and we have not had an appeal. So this is why I cannot even give you a ballpark figure.
If we give you more time, can you give us some ballpark estimate?
I, I think what he's saying is that since there hasn't ever been an appeal to this kind of, of a nuisance abatement, that there is really no estimate. However, the cost that's in front of us, the six thousand and ten thousand dollars, will move ahead to enforce the current laws and, and to enforce the demolition order. And if there is a counter, or another motion, or another legal action from any of the parties, then we can then decide what to do at that time.
Well, my, my intention is before I, I vote yes or no on, you know, allocating six to ten thousand dollars to, to move forward with this, I'd like to see, you know, have some reasonable feeling on, on where this could lead us. Now, are you telling us that, you know, over the past many, many years and all over the United States, there have never been a case for you to use for, for some estimate?
I could reach out to my colleagues in the industry and ask to see if there have been any appeals and how much it costs them. I'm not, I mean, depends on the different jurisdictions, but my office in this city, we have not had an appeal, so we don't have costs.
So it's, it's only in the city and in your, in your firm? You have never dealt with this? But there may be other example, at other city or at the other law firm that might allow you to give us a ballpark estimate?
I don't know. What I'm, what I'm responding is that I could call my colleagues to see if anyone else has had that experience.
Comment, question? I, I think, I share the same sentiments as the Mayor Pro Tem, Jones, and that is July is coming around, and obviously, we all want to see it come down. My question to the city attorney is, if we pull the trigger on this, there's no turning back. We are part of this. We, we can't, if some deal does, does get worked out, does, does the order still go through to take it down?
What we are doing is putting it in the hands of a judge. The receiver is appointed by the judge, so the receiver works for the court. The parties can still negotiate with the receiver.
Okay.
Remember that the order is to complete construction or tear down the building. So the judge will still have the jurisdiction if they can show the receiver that there is financing and a project. That is part of the order, so that can be enforced at that time as well.
That's, thank, thank you for that clarification, and thank you for asking that question, Mr. Beard. You know, what our legal counsel has just provided is in the interest of our city to move forward with this order and to authorize the city attorney, which is my motion. So, you know, we have a very clear answer. We have a clear cost. If anything changes, it comes back to us. But we need to take this step. We've avoided this step, I believe, three separate times since I've been mayor, at least. There should not be any more delay. You see the graffiti up there? That means people are climbing up there at night. They may fall down. Whether we're liable or not, we will definitely be named in a lawsuit. Whether we have to pay out or not, that's not something I want to see in my city. I don't think anybody does. We have that responsibility to our people.
Yeah, but Mr. Mayor, as far as, once we get this to the judge, will basically the same judge who's hearing the motions that the parties are going through, or will be different judges, you think?
We don't know. There are two or three judges as normal here, these type of cases. I'm pretty sure the parties are gonna wanna consolidate.
Yeah. I, I hope so for economy reasons.
And I think so too. I, I think, you know, with, with this motion, I think we're gonna speed up some communication, and, and people are gonna talk. You have to. Because times, you know, we're, we're not wasting any time here. I, I don't think we should either. So, that's why I made the motion. Appreciate the support from Mr. Fan with the second. And you've heard, you know, the, the concerns about money? You heard the concerns about whether, you know, that building really needs to be taken down or not? Fact of the matter is, it will be heard in court. And again, like you said, Mr. Jones, this is not a city issue. This is a civil matter. However, we must do our part and enforce our laws. That's our responsibility as a council, and we've delayed that time and time again while we see that it is a danger to the public. Not only that, it is hurting our surrounding local businesses. Let me repeat that. It is a danger to the public, and it is hurting our local businesses. And on top of that, the public does not like it. Why are we having this discussion again and again and again? The time to take action is tonight. There's been a motion, there's been a second. If there's no more discussion, Mr. Jones?
I think whether we do or don't move this tonight, the building will still stand, and somebody could still do graffiti or fall off regardless. So I think, I think it's an irrelevant point. I think the, the building will still stand because the parties aren't gonna just.
If we move forward, Mr. Sadover, how long do you think this will, will take before we get the judgment from the judge?
Well, we're probably filing in about two weeks. So we're, it's, it's not gonna be immediate, so it, it could be another month before, you know, we actually have a hearing on it.
I know we wanted to be.
And how soon do you think, you know, the judge would hand out a, a judgment? And how soon can we, if, assuming that, that the order is to tear it down, how soon would that be?
Oh, that's not gonna be immediate either, because it's a major structure. So I, I suspect that a receiver is going to want to get bids, and is gonna wanna get some engineering specifications for taking down the, the steel beams. And so it could be, it could be six to one year before there's any demolition.
And assuming that neither party is going to appeal, the best-case scenario is you would have the judgment in about three months, would you say?
A court order.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and then probably, you know, months or maybe a years after that, then you might have it going to be tear down. If it takes that long, then I don't see, you know, two months or three months comparing to a year. months or three months comparing to a year and a half. Is this worth it for us to stay outside of the dispute between the two private parties?
Wait a minute.
Is that a substitute motion?
Hang on a second. Hang on a second. Mr. Jones, hang on one second.
Okay.
Okay. This is not about us interfering into a civil matter. Let's be very clear about that. What's in front of us to consider is actually enforcing our own laws. Okay? And in addition to that, let's just be very clear. I want everyone to know, we're not interfering into a civil matter. However, at the same time, if we move this and if we approve this, it may just bring the parties together. It may be putting their feet to the fire because we've waited over a year, a year and a half, and longer than that. And we haven't seen anything. And it just so happens that you had the same reasoning last time. And so did you, Mr. Jones. And look where we are today. Same place we were last time, and the time before that, and the time before that. Public should know that. So if there's no more discussion, we can vote?
I'll second your substitute motion.
What is your substitute motion, Mr. Bowie?
I would like to make a substitute motion to, you know, continue to consider this matter until, you know, after August 30th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Could you please call for the vote?
Sure. Please vote.
Most received three yes votes with Mayor Nguyen and Councilmember Fawn voting no.
Okay. We have a public hearing tonight, going back to 5A.
Yes, we have a public hearing, adoption of a resolution approving issuance of bonds by the California Public Finance Authority for the benefit of 10632 Bolsa Avenue LP to assist with financing for the housing project located at 10632 Bolsa Avenue, Garden Grove. And Allison is here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, you're asked to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, also known as TEFRA. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed is located, and that the governing body adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the California Public Finance Authority, or CALPFA. 10632 Bolsa Avenue LP proposes to obtain tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $15 million to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of an existing 77-unit affordable housing community located at 10632 Bolsa in Garden Grove. CALPFA is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The bonds to be issued by the CALPFA for the project will be the sole responsibility of 10632 Bolsa Avenue LP, and the city will have no financial, legal, or moral obligation, liability, or responsibility for the project, or the repayment of the bonds for the financing of the project. All financing documents with respect to the issuance of the bonds will contain clear disclaimers that the bonds are not obligations of the city or of the state of California, but are to be paid for solely from the funds provided from the borrower. Tonight, it is recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing, accept comments regarding the adoption of the resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the California Public Finance Authority for the benefit of 10632 Bolsa Avenue LP to provide financing for the proposed 77-unit affordable housing project located at 10632 Bolsa Avenue, and to adopt the resolution in favor of the issuance of the bonds by the CALPFA. Tonight, we have Caitlin Landcott, the program administrator for CALPFA, and Sean Boyd, the chief operating officer for Miriam &amp; Company, the developer. And together with myself, we are available to answer any questions that you may have about this.
Any questions for staff? I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please step forward. Please make yourself be known. Madam Clerk, do you have any cards for this item?
No, I do not.
I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Is there a motion?
I'll move it. Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passed with five yes votes.
6A.
6A is consideration of the Main Street Assessment District budget and levying of assessments. And Anna Neill is here to present that report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baylor, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. In March of this year, the Main Street Commission approved its fiscal year 1617 budget for ongoing services such as landscaping and minor improvements. The proposed budget reflects no increases in assessments and remains at $19.92 per linear foot. For the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the City Council must approve the proposed budget, direct staff to initiate assessment proceedings, and approve an engineer's report. The assessment will raise approximately $27,000 in revenues. Therefore, tonight, the City Council is asked to approve the Main Street District budget for fiscal year 1617, approve the engineer's report, adopt the attached resolution of intention to levy and collect assessments, and set a public hearing date for June 14, 2016. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? I entertain a motion.
Move the recommendation. Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passed with five yes votes.
Okay, 6B. Received a letter of resignation from Chan Chung, and I'm going to move to accept that letter and request our clerk to issue a notice of vacancy and call for applications. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Jones, it didn't take.
Oh, I thought I did.
Motion passed with five yes votes.
Okay, 7A.
7A is award of a contract to CJ Concrete Construction for on-call concrete construction. And Bill Murray is here for that report.
Thank you, Ms. Baylor, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to award a contract to CJ Construction for on-call concrete construction within the public right of way and unprobable property. Currently, the city has about 200 requests for concrete repairs that include defects in sidewalks, drive approaches, and curbs and gutters. Repair requests are prioritized, and then they are addressed on a first-come, first-served basis. The budget amount of $450,000 per year should maintain the status quo condition of our concrete infrastructure. Additional funding would be required to improve the overall condition of the concrete citywide. Staff received and opened two bids last month and determined that CJ Construction was the lowest responsible bidder. The winning bid was for $450,000 per year for five years for a total of $2.25 million. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin working by July, and this work was included, or this contract was included in this year's departmental budget and will be paid for with gas tax and general funds. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available. Should you have any questions?
Thank you. Colleagues?
Quick question. They've done work for the city before, haven't they?
Yes.
And we're satisfied, obviously, if we're going ahead with it. Only two bids were received? Is that unusual?
We would have liked to see more, but they were competitive bids.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Do you like to move it?
Move approval.
Second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passed with five yes votes.
7B.
7B is discussion of medical marijuana regulations and related matters.
Mayor and members of the City Council, item 7B is to allow for discussion by the City Council on the subject matter of medical marijuana. Your report before you touches on the recent state legislation that combined is considered the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, referred to as MERSA. Also, land use considerations, public safety and community concerns, possible taxation application, the California Volunecold Act, and other jurisdictions, ordinances, amendments. MERSA, in essence, covers the various aspects identified as it relates to cannabis industry, which basically includes growing and cultivation, distribution, dispensaries, manufacturing, and laboratories. The process from the state requires a two-license approach, where the first license is obtained at the local level, and then a second license obtained at the state level, of which medical marijuana operations have to have two licenses in order to operate. From staff's standpoint, our report provides an overview of possible land use and zoning applications/regulations applicable to medical marijuana uses, and through research found some common denominators imposed on such uses, such as provide clear definitions of all facets as applied to MERSA, do background checks on owners and operators of such businesses, and that using our zoning tools such as conditional use permits be imposed on all marijuana businesses regardless of type and/or location. We find that typically, where other cities have allowed such uses, they have restricted them to industrial and commercial zones, with certain development standards imposed, such as distance requirements from residential zones and sensitive uses. However, none were found to allow such in any residential type of zone. Other measures imposed reflected detailed security measures, proper ventilation, no loitering, and limiting hours of operation. MERSA does allow for local jurisdictions to impose taxation measures on such operations, and other cities have taken liberty to pursue this even if they still hold a ban against the uses being in operation currently. The taxation rate can be up to 15% with an option to have a tax at or below voter-approved measure. Please note, however, that placing a measure on the ballot seeking voter approval of a tax measure on marijuana industries could experience an added cost between $8,000 and $12,000. It is also noted that both from input from the community at recent town hall meetings and from the police department, that there are concerns regarding aspects of the medical marijuana as it pertains to growing and cultivation and dispensaries. It is expressed that there are and have been continual issues with public safety, enforcement-related matters, increasing crimes, and other expressed community concerns, such as youth having access to such, and businesses located next to dispensaries having expressed various types of complaints, such as loitering, noise, smell, and lingering odors. We have attached to your memo regulations that are in place from two cities, San Ana and Palm Springs, and regulation amendments from another city, Oakland, that allows for such uses. Staff recommends the City Council to consider the following and direct staff accordingly. Authorize the city attorney to prepare an ordinance and measure to be placed on the November 2016 ballot seeking voter approval of a tax of up to 15% on medical marijuana activities, which shall not take effect until the City Council adopts regulations and revisions to the city's municipal code to permit medical marijuana activities in the city. Direct staff to commence the process to enact regulations and revise the municipal code to establish land use standards and other business regulations under which medical marijuana businesses could operate, or maintain the ban against medical marijuana businesses and activities until the time that the regulations are in place to permit them to operate in the city. That concludes staff's presentation, and we're here and available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, first, I want to say that I don't think anybody disagrees with maintaining the current ban against medical marijuana businesses and activities until the time that regulations are in place to permit them and operate in our city. I think that's very clear in our city and from our council. I think we need to look into this very carefully and address the concerns that have been brought up. I think that, you know, there are other cities that we are not looking at. What we see here are the regulations in Palm Springs and San Ana, which have been enacted prior to MERSA. The only ones, Oakland's the only one that we have here. And I think we need further study on that. I think we need to see it firsthand. I think, you know, the task force has heard from the public the concerns from the public, and it's all been very helpful. We do want to address these concerns. I think a part of the reason why we developed the task force and did this research is to address those concerns. And we want to continue to do so. But we also want to have the right information and the facts, and also to receive expert advice from, you know, your colleagues in terms of city staff. What is the city manager opinion in Oakland, or in Berkeley, or in San Jose, or Sacramento? I know, Mr. Stiles, you had mentioned before that you have gone to different dispensaries in Aurora, Colorado. And recently, I read news that Aurora, Colorado, has a surplus due to their recreational sales, which is different. It's different. We're not looking at recreation here. We're specifically talking about medical cannabis, not recreation. However, the revenue generated in Aurora, Colorado, has allowed their city council to help homeless folks, to open up a community center, to help with youth programs. And I think that's great and all, but we also need to see how this will work specifically in Garden Grove. Because our city is different. Every city is different. And that's where I think the staff needs to continue to do research, and for the task force as well, to continue to do research and see what's out there, and how we can avoid some of the bad policies in cities where it hasn't been successful, but also see what we can learn from good policies to be able to apply in Garden Grove. I also want to make it very clear that the people brought up very good concerns and very good points and arguments. I know this is a heated issue. Folks are very passionate. But we can think about this very logically, in a civil manner. And I want to highlight some things. I'm personally not here to legislate morality and to judge anybody for what they, as an individual, choose to put or not put in their body. That's not my job. So I think it is quite hypocritical to discriminate against this particular plant while we have alcohol and nicotine and tobacco and other pharmaceutical drugs out there. That's just the reality. And like a patient said, she doesn't feel safe. And I'm sure many patients don't feel safe. Buying their medication that they don't know if it's tested or not, they don't know where it came from, where it was grown, they don't know any of that, and to get it from a street corner. That's what we would essentially say when we say, no. And I don't think that's really fulfilling our responsibility for the public safety. And also to address some of the issues that we have. Yes, we currently have about 30 or so unlicensed medical marijuana dispensaries in our city. And that's not counting the delivery services and whatnot. And... And the state laws are very detailed in providing guidelines. It even talks about definitions. They make a distinction between what is a transporter and what is a distributor. We need to make sure that we do it right in our city so that we set the highest of standards in our city. And I'm not just talking about dispensaries here. I'm talking about the full range of what is available that the state has put forward in their guidelines in MERSA. It is our responsibility to take action on a problem that's currently existing in our city in terms of land use and zoning because like Councilmember Bowie has brought up from local businesses and we heard that from the local businesses in our city in the forums. They're sick of it. They're not happy with the nuisance that it is causing in our city today. That's also due to a lack of regulations. We don't want that. None of us want that. The regulations allow us to control that first and foremost. So that's why those laws are there. Someone mentioned the security and safety issue of it being a cash-only business. And then someone else said, well, there are solutions now. There are solutions being developed in Congress and there are currently solutions developed in the private sector to address it being a cash-only business. It doesn't have to be. So those solutions are there and we need to find out what they are. I know that Mr. Okiriki, our finance director, our assistant city manager, is looking into that as well. The ID checks, I don't know how they do it now in unlicensed businesses. I imagine they don't. And of course, if they don't, then you will have that problem of kids having access to it. None of us want that. None of us want our kids having access to medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, or any prescription drugs for that matter. And when we do compare the two, the one killing folks every day with overdoses is actually the prescription drugs. That's a fact. And in terms of crime as well, we've heard and seen reports of armed robberies in pharmacies, of break-ins from the rooftop to steal OxyContin, talking about addiction. And we heard from a doctor, a very credible doctor, a researcher, an expert in this plant, speak tonight, Dr. Wagner, tell us how he actually uses it to alleviate his patients' addictions. And I do believe that more research needs to be done. And that's one of the things that we can facilitate as well. So I'd like to share that, share my perspective on that, and also address the issue of resource, whether we have the resources or not. Based on advice of our finance director, right now we have to develop a solution to find resource to enforce our laws. Does that mean we should just wait and see what happens with hotel development or other development in our city? Or should we take a proactive approach and say, hey, let's ask the voters whether they are interested in taxing it or not, and then we can adopt regulations? Having the tax measure question on the ballot does not mean that it will be legalized, does not mean that it is okay to have an unlicensed business in our city. That's not what that means. It means that we want to hear from voters whether our city should tax it if we are to move forward with regulations. And I imagine, I'm very confident that everyone in our city, whether they're for or against this, would be for very strict regulations that meet the expectations and standards in the unique community of Garden Grove. The unique geography of Garden Grove in terms of zoning and planning. And that's why we have to rely on our experts here in our city. In addition to that, we must help our experts learn about how this has been successful or and not successful in other cities so we can have a full picture of what we're looking at and that we can think logically about this and we can assess the facts and have a civil discussion, not an emotional one. That's our responsibility. So I do urge my colleagues to carefully consider this and to authorize the city attorney to prepare this ordinance and to direct staff and ask for staff to give us a timeline as well on when regulations will be developed so that we can continue to engage the public in that process. And that's very important. I'm not expecting, I was hoping that the forums would actually solicit input in terms of regulations. Unfortunately, that wasn't, most of it wasn't that. It was something else. But when we do draft, if we do, when, the public should give us input and I will be soliciting that input. That's very important. Our city is very unique. Our city is not Santa Ana. Our city is not Oakland. Our city is not Palm Springs. We're Garden Grove. So that's where it's important that we look at this from our city's perspective and our unique makeup and the conditions in our city. Colleagues?
I guess since I'm the second member of the task force, my colleague would want me to comment first before everyone would chime in. Let me begin with this. I think the mission of the task force is trying to address and tackle two key things. Number one, we need to have a better handle on the illegal dispensary that seem to be in an endless loop. I heard about this issue since 2010 and it seemed like every couple of years it kept surfacing back and we gained some momentum and then we, and then it reverts back to more chaos. So the number one issue that we are trying to tackle is how are we going to deal with the illegal dispensaries that have caused many, many issues? And we have seen that from our residents who come out and express their concern about it. And the second issue that we're trying to tackle would be how do we, you know, provide the access to the, you know, the real, you know, medical patient who need, who need access to medical marijuana medicine? So that's, that's the main goal of this, of this task force. Now, as we sit down and talk to staff internally and then we go through the two town hall meeting to, you know, solicit comments and concern and input from, from the residents as well as from the industry because it is important to us to really understand, you know, what are the issue? The very first step that we have to, to begin is understand, you know, the issue that we face and many of them I believe are legitimate concern. For example, I agree that kid in junior highs or even I heard some concern about the school district that the marijuana candy now start to, you know, getting down to some elementary student. That got to be a major concern for our resident, for educations, you know, for, for school district as, as for parents. The, the simple reason is this, kid at the younger age do not tend to try cigarette nor cocaine or other serious drugs, but they are more easily prone to try out a candy. And so that got to be, you know, a very top concern that we need to address. And there are many other concerns that I do not need to go over in these remarks. So let me backtrack. The very first step that we need to look at is trying to understand the scope of the issue. Once we understand the issue, then we need to take a look at what are the possible solution and/or is there a solution? And once we identify some possible solutions to a particular issue, we then need to assess how good or how confident we are in term of implementing that solution. Even if there is a solution, it does not necessarily mean that we will be able to carry that out. And if we carry it out, at what cost? And what are the, we need to do the risk assessment. So that, that will be the next step. And I would like to, to point out one thing. I do not, I cannot perceive that we are going to lift the ban anytime soon. Look at it. There are two, really two mandate before we, before we can even begin going down that path. Number one, we need to consider whether the resident will agree to a taxation. And that is a vote where the resident had to, to decide, not the city council. Why do we need to consider the taxation and put it out on the ballot for the resident? Take us, an analogy of driving, driver license. We should not, we should not begin asking, are we going to take a driver test before we pass the written test? There's no point even trying to think about the driver, driving test at the DMV before we, we go out there and pass the, the written test. And so the taxation is that prerequisite because if we do not have the, the revenue necessary so that we can have the proper resource to monitor and enforce it, there's no point even exploring it. And that's why we, we have, the task force need to ask that very first question. And then secondly, the type of regulation that we are going to consider, we have to take a look at a wide variety of, of issue and solution and possibility before we can even draft the, the ordinance and provide that to the resident for input. So I, I do not see any possibility of, of that coming up very soon here. I would like to mention one thing, just because I am in the task force with the mayor, it does not necessarily mean I agree with him on every single point. There will be time when I strongly disagree with him and there some other time that, on some other issue or solution that I might be in agreement with him. So I would like to make that clarification because there have been rumor that, that I and, and the mayor are on the same side. We are not. We are just a member, two member of a task force. That need to be clear.
Thank you.
Now, having said this, I think we are not, we are still far away from, from being able to decide whether we should put this on the, on the, on the ballot to, to ask the resident whether to tax or not to tax. I think we do need to get more information. Today we heard many more testament from, from the publics and that need to be amended to this, to this report. And also the, the, the task force need to identify possible solution for consideration before we could even begin asking the city attorney to, to draft the, the measure, whether to tax or not to tax. And we do have time, right? Is that right, Mr. Sandoval? Do we have time? When is the deadline that we need to, to have that completed?
The deadline under the statute is August 12th, so you're, it would be your meeting of August 9th. But I would like to have some time to put a draft together before that meeting time.
There, I don't think there is any reason why you would not continue to explore it, right? As a part of the task force, is that correct?
Right. I mean, if, if the task force includes working on the tax measure, then, you know, we, we have until at least the meeting of August 9th.
I'm done with my comment.
So I'll just start by saying that just a kind of a matter of procedural point was in different interactions with folks on both sides of this issue leading up to this meeting. I got jabbed and probably some of others did about why we, why I didn't attend the task force meeting. So the procedural point is just specifically that a subcommittee of less than a majority of council was formed to go out and study and research this issue and bring back findings to the majority, to the rest of council to then sort of weigh in on. So here we are. And I mean, on that note, I'd like to thank the mayor and Councilmember Bowie for stepping forward and volunteering to do that because I realize it's, you put yourselves out there and you get a lot of, in the middle of a lot of hype and very strong-willed opinions on this. So I, I do appreciate that you guys sort of were the firing line on this. And obviously, as a result of the task force meetings, there was, there was a lot that, a lot of interesting things that came out of that. We have a lot of residents that are very impassioned against this. I believe we have a lot of residents who are in favor of doing something on this too. And apparently we have a police force, it's, police force is very impassioned against this as well. So we, we put this out there, we learned a lot. From my perspective, from having seen this come up a number of times over the years, I honestly don't know what's the best way to manage this thing as a fiduciary of the city's coffers. I mean, there's, there's, it was talked about, there's a cost to do a regulatory system and do we have the resources to a regulatory system? I mean, there's, there's a cost to implement a ban also and that's been, part of my concern is that we've had a ban in place, but we haven't really actively enforced it because doing so would be committing funds to pursue legal actions, do that sort of thing. So, I mean, there's costs either way. The question is, how do you most effectively get through this? Couple that with, we're in an election year and presumably, I don't know this for a fact, but what I keep hearing is that this is going to be on the ballot in November for recreational use in the state or for something. I don't even know honestly what might be on, but I've heard a lot of suggestion that this would be on the ballot in November, so.
My understanding is that those are two separate things. Mr. Sandoval, legal counsel, would you please chime in?
Yeah, there are a few proposals for recreational, but it will not affect the medical marijuana side of the regulations.
Because I imagine the patients would still want, you know, to make sure that their medication is not contaminated and, and I, based on what I heard from a doctor, there are different proportions of different compounds in the plant that treat certain things. I imagine you're not going to get... I imagine you're not going to get that detailed information if you're using it recreationally. I don't know. I imagine so. So it's not the same thing. These are two different things.
I did see in one of the measures, an amendment to the current MRSA regulations that would exempt medical marijuana from use and sales tax, not the separate tax that is authorized, the 15% and the local taxation. But as you know, prescription medicine is not taxed in California today. And there is language in one of the measures that would exempt medical marijuana from local use and sales taxes.
I think my point I was trying to get at was, in light of a lot of speculation about something coming up in November, and I don't have any medical expertise on that to weigh in, I don't know whether that's the city's role to be, I don't know if that's within our jurisdiction to opine about the medical viability of it. But what I do see is something could be coming up on the horizon in November. I think it's imperative that we protect local control first and foremost. So I think we would all agree on that, that we don't want, regardless of what happens in November, that the state comes in and tells us how we are mandated to regulate or not or do this, right? So I think it's imperative that we, that we maintain the ban in place until or unless anything else changes. But I personally don't see any urgency in rushing forward on trying to be innovative or overly proactive on this particular issue. So my take would be, let's wait and see what happens in November and then go from there.
Well, the thing is, we want to have this on a general election because we have a broader input from the electorate. We have more folks chiming in. And that's a good thing. In a democracy, we want more folks to let us know. So that's why I think it's important to have the tax in question on the November 2016 As you know, when we have put other questions on taxing on the ballot, it's better to have it on a general. And this is, I believe, going to be a record turnout. So we'll get a lot input, a lot more input from the public in that election. So we have to take that into consideration. We should.
Agreed. But the question that you're asking is basically a no-brainer. It's like basically, am I going to tax it? Of course we're going to tax it. If it's going to be legal, of course, we're going to make money off of it. But to me, we're putting the cart before the horse because right now, we're still having the ban. And so the way I see it, the power play that could be here is that basically, we put that on the ballot, it says, yes, we're going to tax, we have a change in council. All it takes is the majority vote to lift the ban. And so I'm not, you know, quite ready to go there. And so I would be on the same side as Mayor Potem Steve Jones. Let's see how it plays out. This is a very tricky thing for our city, something I don't think we should be very gung-ho about. Because I think that after hearing the responses from our residents, I don't think our people are ready for that. And, you know, I wouldn't be losing a lot of sleep by losing some money from the taxing, at least not initially. I want to have the time to see how it plays out in our local cities. What you said, Mr. Mayor, was very good as far as having our city manager talk to other city managers, get their intake, their experiences, because, you know, I want to do this right. And if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. And I don't think right now, our city is ready for that. So I would hold off on having any ballot issues.
But the ballot question isn't about lifting the ban.
Understood. But the ballot issue is about taxing it, which I can, without even put on the ballot, I can probably put my last paycheck on this, everybody says yes. But the question of the matter is, I don't want to make a political move where basically our residents is going to be outgunned and basically have the carpet pulled beneath them because of the fact that our residents don't want the ban to be lifted. And if the decision's up to the council, I can foresee that the moment that we allow it to be taxed, not perhaps this council, but the next council can simply just lift the ban and there we go. Now we're down the road of having marijuana in our city, which perhaps the majority of our people does not want it or do not want it.
You know, I'm not so sure that the folks that we heard from are necessarily a representative sample of residents in our city. You know, a lot of folks that came out, they were opposed to it and they had different ideas. I don't think that they had all the facts. And so I think perhaps we, if this is possible, Mr. Sandoval, to do a poll on whether, you know, voters in our city would be in favor of moving forward to lift the ban, to advise the next council. And this is going to be an issue. I mean, this isn't going away. This is going to be an ongoing issue. So, I mean, that's, that will help inform direction. Because I'm not so sure if that is a representative sample of the sentiments in our city. And that's legitimate. So, you know, we've moved forward, we want to maintain local control, we've moved to this point, we voted for one, is because we want to address the problem. And there is a fiscal impact with the current ban. There isn't budget for it. And there are many things that we have to consider. Right now, we're talking about the budget to approve for next year. And yes, we do want to address the issues of crime and safety. That's our top priority. That was identified in our retreat that we had as a council with our management team. And one of the ways to address that and to maintain local control is to have the regulations. So what I'm hearing now is, well, we don't want to take action. I don't think that's okay. I don't think it's putting the cart before the horse. I actually think waiting is not being, not doing our job, really. I don't care if there's going to be a recreational measure or two or three or whatnot on a November ballot. This is a current issue in our city right now, today. This is currently, all those problems that folks talked about is a current problem in our city today. And we already received information and also advice from our finance director in terms of the impact on our budget to only go with the ban, to enforce a ban. And we've heard from police too, those problems that we're dealing with. So if we want to wait, then what is the solution? Because I don't think waiting is a solution. Waiting is not a solution. How are we going to address it? I really want to know.
I think the solution is that we make our mind up, one or the other, and then we just go after that end goal. My pragmatic solution right now is the fact that we have a ban in place and we should go with that until we change course. So we should focus 100% on how do we shut them down, period. I know that we've talked before, we've talked before of trying to go after the big boy, you know, perhaps making an example of one, trying to cut off the head, and then we go for the rest of them. We cannot have this Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde mentality where we're trying to enforce the ban in one hand and then try to make it legal on the other hand. We have to make a decision, either we legalize it or we go for the kill and take them out. All right? And so we take one of two actions and we'll see what happens. That is the solution.
Comment? I agree with Councilman Fann there. I was at those, both forums, and it spoke loudly, there are a lot of citizens out there, over 300, I would assume. And the vast, vast majority were supportive of the ban. They reflected the same concerns we all have, youth access. The criminal element came into play, a lot of discussion about that, and that's a real, real problem. So I'm not going to change my position, and I want to keep the ban in place. I don't think, my attitude from the beginning was, let's wait and see. It will become up as a ballot initiative for recreational use, then we should really look into what elements of control and regulations we'll have as a city. We'll have the citizens' input throughout the state. And I heard loud and clear at those forums that they do not want to introduce medical marijuana clinics, legal or illegal. So I want to stay with that. And I think we, time is not of the essence. We can wait, we can learn. And so I'm going to be supportive of the ban and not moving forward to put this on the ballot as a tax issue, taxing issue. So that's where I stand, and I'm not going to change my position on it.
I, as a city, I see the argument back and forth between the mayor and my colleagues. And it's zero into keep the ban or not keep the ban. I think that's not the question here. The question that we have, I think we need to address, two issue. The very first issue is the illegal dispensary. And the second issue is, how do we, you know, provide access to medical marijuana for the patient? Even though, assuming that they are only the 5%, I believe that they have the right to have access to medicine. And as I have said over and over during my campaign and during the past couple of years, the beauty about America is we strive, our constitution demand that we protect the interest of the majority as well as the minority. And it is concerned to me that the patient are required to jump through the hoop to get access to medicine. And that is, in a sense, you know, violating their right. Now, assuming 90 or 95% of all the people using it for non-medical, we cannot penalize the tiny minority in order to address the bigger issue of the 90 or 95% who use it for other purposes. That's not fair to them. I listened to some of the patient who spoke out today. It's an overly burden if we ask them that, hey, you know, if you need medicine, you need to go to Santa Ana to get it. Now, and other people are saying that, well, if they make a phone call, the medicine will be delivered to their doorstep. But in Garden Grove, is, as we have the ban on dispensary, the ban on cultivation and the ban on transportation, they are getting their drugs or the medicines illegally because they cannot ask the drug to, the medicine delivered to their doorstep without violating the ban on marijuana transportation. So I think, I think we need to look at that from a total perspective rather than just a single side, you know, this side or that side. And as society, we get accustomed to a stereotype view. You know, we are for it or we are against it, rather than taking a look at a, from a problem-solving perspective. And that's why I believe that today, tonight, we are not ready to put it on the ballot to tax or not to tax. But we need to continue to study the issue. We have not even go through the list of the issue and see which one is solvable and which one is not. So how could we come up with a decision one way or the other? I would ask my colleague to remain to be open-minded, looking at the issue, looking at how we can solve it, and see if, even if we identify the approach to address all of this issue, it does not necessarily mean that we will be able to implement it. It will not necessarily mean that we would be able to successfully execute it. There's a lot of, a lot of things that need to happen before we even go down to the path to say whether or not we are going to lift the ban or keep the ban. The question that we have tonight is, at some point, a solution may require us to ask the voters to decide. And I'm saying, asking the resident, not the city council, asking the resident to decide if and when, in the future, if and when, we are going to tax, I mean, we are going to lift the ban, either partially or wholly, are we going to tax it? And that is a question that this council cannot determine. So if we do not put that this November, we would have to wait two years unless we want to do a special election just to do that. And so from a timing perspective, to be fair to the minority person, we really need to take a look at this and see what do we need to do here? What is the, what is the right policy, rather than waiting? We cannot ask them to keep waiting. Well, let's wait for another, you know, wait until November to see what happened, then this council will take a look at it. I think that is not a fair, this is an election year. For me to, you know, come out to, to try to address this issue is a major risk for me. But it is a risk that I'm willing to take because I believe in standing up for the rights of the minority. I could not sit here and facing my conscience to ask that, hey, I'm going to look after my political interest and will deny them, or at least asking the person to have to wait for another six months or eight months. I think it's not right for me to do that. And I also acknowledge that tonight, I do not have enough information and this council may not have enough information to decide whether or not we will put it on the ballot for taxation in November. I would like to make a substitute motion.
There's been no motion. There's been no motion.
And I want to clarify, city council cannot put tax measures on a special election. So if we don't do it in 2016, we have to wait till 2018.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. So, you know, there's a recommendation here to consider these things. We don't need a motion, but if there is no objection, you know, based on what I'm hearing here from the dais, I'd like to give direction to the city attorney to come back to us with what regulations and a tax measure would look like for council to consider approving. Is there any objection to that?
Yeah, I object to that. I want to go ahead and move forward, having a concept or a plan for regulation when my position is, we should wait and see, wait for the general election, see how recreational and all the other measures come before us to then look into studying it and researching in that regards. I think we're spending tax staff time on something that may be very premature, maybe overridden by state, whatever initiative may be passed.
But if we wait until November and the council decided to move forward with the exploring, exploring the possibility of regulating it, then we are going to have to wait until November 2018 to ask the resident to vote on whether to tax or not to tax. And that means- and that means we are asking the, the person to wait for another two years and a half before we even, they even, before they know what going to happen with their right to, to have access to their medicine, that's two years and a half that we're asking them to, to wait.
So, let's just take a, let's just run down here, Mr. Fan, on direction to staff to come back to us.
No.
No? No? Okay, so there's no motion, no one wants to take action in this, Mr. Bowie, you want to?
I was thinking, so what was your question to?
Oh, I, I just wanted to, if, if there's no motion, I wanted to give direction to staff to move on and continue and come back to us.
I, I have no, I do not have enough information here to make my decision one way or the other.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking for, I'd like.
So, I, I would like staff to give me more information, because this is just, we, we only went through and identified the issue, I would like to, to make a rational decision, and for that I need more information, right now I have a very comprehensive, comprehensive list of all of the issues that have been identified, I would like to explore the, the complexity of this issue, and what, is there, are there any remedies to it, and is there any risk in, in executing a plan to address this issue, all of that information need to be, need to be in place for me so that I can decide whether or not we will put the tax measure on the ballot or not.
That would be doing our due diligence, and that's why I ask if we can direct staff to, well, we, you know, you don't have to draft, you know, regulations for approval, but we would like to know what regulations could be in place to address these concerns, because right now we're saying we don't want to address it, that doesn't make any sense to me, right now we're saying not only do we not want to address it, but we're not going to solve the problem either.
One thing I know for sure is, I am not ready to propose that we leave the ban, the ban will stay, period, and will stay here for, for quite some time, what I would like to do is, I felt that I'm obligated to answer to the patient who claim that they need access to their medicine, now, I do not know how many percent they are, maybe five percent, maybe seven percent, maybe even two percent, but that's not the point, even if they're, they are only two percent, they have the right to have access to their medicine without having to travel to Santa Ana or some other place, and, and if we demand that, or amended that they have to wait until 2000, to the end of 2018, which is another two years and a half, for the, for the answer to their question, that how come I do not have the right to access my medicine locally, I think that's, that's a long time to ask a person to wait for, and that's why I think that we, I am obligated, I am elected to serve everyone, even though, and even serving the people who do not vote for me, that's what my, my office is, I am a city council member, I have to serve every one of my constituents, whether or not they vote for me, and so I, I felt that asking a person to wait two years and a half for the answer, and even if, even if we, we live, even if we decide to lift the ban in 2018, it's not going to be the moment after we, we pass the tax measure, we still have to have time to plan out the operation, the logistics of how are we going to execute it, our police force will have to ramp up their, their resource before they can even start to execute that plan and, and given out the, the permit, so, I, I think, I, I think we, we, we got to be, be, to do the legion works, and we got to understand the issue more in-depth, understand the, the, you know, how we are going to address this issue, whether we can, we can't address them, so with that, I, I would urge my colleague to continue to, to, to study and understand this issue, and I, I, I agree that, you know, staff time is money, but this is a complex issue, an important issue, we should not rush to a decision one way or the other, and let, let's stop being stereotype here.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion here, I'll take the last recommendation here, which is to maintain the ban against medical marijuana businesses and activities until the time that regulations are in place to permit them to operate in the city, that's my motion.
We actually don't need a motion for that. We don't, we don't need a motion for that.
That was a motion submitted.
City attorney, isn't the current ban in place?
I thought the current ban is in place and the council already indicate that it will be in place, the ban will continue on, right, all of us agree on that, why do we need to vote on it?
It's the third, the third item on here, Mr. Beard.
It's just a recommendation, so if you want to pass a motion, that's where I'm supportive of.
Okay, let's read this very carefully, says recommendation then for city council to consider the following, that third bullet point, it's actually not actionable, Mr. Sandoval, is that correct?
The, the last item is there because it's related to the top two, it's basically, if you're going to give us direction to prepare regulations and a tax measure, then you're also stating that by default means the first two actions are not lifting the ban.
Okay, thank you, okay, so I, I definitely agree with Mr. Bowie here, even though you may not agree with me, I agree with you on further study, I think that's very important, we clearly do not have a comprehensive picture here in terms of solutions, and why would we shut the door on solutions that are out there, why do you not want to know what solutions are, that is so bizarre, we should, that's our job. We should find out what the solutions are, what I'm hearing is that we don't even want to know, we just want to say ban, enforce the ban, when you know we have a budget issue where it is very difficult to enforce the ban, we need to develop solutions, this is our city, it's not about whether I believe that this is right or wrong, that's not what we're talking about, although some people may like to have it be that kind of argument, I'm not willing to go there, we have to do our job to find solutions for problems in our city, and we need to know what solutions are out there, that's why folks elected us, not to say, okay, I'm going to take a moral stance on something and then ignore everything else as if it doesn't even exist, that's not our job, okay, any other input on this? There's no motion at all, do you want to move something?
Move what?
Do you want to make a motion on this?
I thought there's no need for a motion.
No, that's the third one, to maintain the ban?
Well, I would like to make a motion to maintain the ban.
Okay, no, we already went through that, okay.
I thought you said that, I don't understand.
Okay, so there is no motion tonight on, on this agenda item, I would like to direct staff to continue with the task force to gather information, what Mr. Bowie and I have been tasked to do, if there are no objections to that, we can continue that.
Continue monitoring.
We, we'd like to see what's out there, to come back with real solutions.
I mean, I, I'm open to that, I mean, I've always been open to more suggestions, I mean, as you talked about before, talking to the other city man, the other city managers, getting their inputs, you know, if it's a train wreck in their city and it's a debacle with far, far safety, I want to know that, if it's not an issue, I want to know that, to me, it's not so much about right or wrong, it's about what's good for our community, I hear you, Brother Fat, as far as the minority has issues and medical needs, but at the same time, we have the police chief who is saying that this is going to be, you know, hell and brimstone for our city, so I want to know which, what, somewhere in that scope of argument is the truth, so I would definitely like, you know, to get more input from other cities that's going through this, that's done this a little bit more than we have, so that we can make the best decision possible, but having said that, I've heard loud and clear from the task force meetings that our city is not ready to lift this ban at this time.
Let's, let's just be very clear on the task force meetings, the task force hasn't actually done a lot of research, staff has done some very preliminary work in terms of looking, in terms of presenting us with what's available in Palm Springs, Santa Ana, and Oakland, and we've heard from the residents their concerns, and we want to address those concerns, but we haven't seen successes and real proposed solutions and possibilities here, that's where we haven't gone yet, so if it's okay, council member Bowie and myself will continue to work with staff to gather that information, and we will report back to council and as we work with staff on this, to see what possible solutions there are, and, and why, why rule out putting something on the ballot when, Mr. Sandoval, what is the final date we would have to vote on it?
August ninth, council meeting, because it's due to the register of orders by August 12.
Why would we rule that out, right?
The other thing is, the caveat is, I just don't want to basically shift the attention that staff is working on other issues that are just equally important, more so important than our ci, our city, that's what I don't want to see, is basically us focus on this one issue, and they're already stretched thin as it is, and so I want to be very mindful that whatever, you know, the task force asks staff to do, it's not going to be taxing them, you know, at a level where it should not be taxing them.
Well, let's, let's, let's ask for, let's ask for advice on, on that particular concern from our city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I mean, obviously, you know, we are going to take whatever direction that, you know, you want us to go in, we will, you know, find the resources that we need to do whatever you need to do, however, you know, as I think has been mentioned in this discussion today, what we gave you today was a baseline report, we understood that you wanted us to gather some preliminary data, Mr. Hill and the community development department put together some basic information about what some of the land use issues are, what some of the zoning issues, in that report, you will see we included some of the safety concerns that the police department added to that report, and you know, one of the things that the chief and I have talked a little bit about, we really want to be careful as a staff that we're giving you information and not taking positions or advocating, that's tough sometimes for us to do, we want to share information, what I will tell you, at least, and especially from the police standpoint, there, there's a lot of understandable nerve, nervousness from their end, you know, they're trying to figure out, they've got a tough issue to deal with, with, to begin with, you know, they're dealing with an illegal substance, we've got, you know, our share of these illegal operations here, so it's a, it's a tough issue for them, and they're, and they do have limited resources, they're trying to deal with this the best way they can, the chief and I talked about the one correspondence that went out to everybody, and I think we, when we both talked about it, it went a little farther in the advocacy area than we really thought, however, at the other hand, it's, it's legitimate information that the department has concerns about, so I, I want to be respectful of that and figure out, I think some of that is some internal stuff that organizationally we have to kind of work together on, just to figure out how we get information out, but to get to your, to, to get to your question, you know, I've had conversations with other city managers here in Orange County about what they're dealing with, I can easily continue to do that and, and do some of that, we're in the middle of a lot of budget preparation stuff right now, I'm going to speak a little bit about that in a minute to you about the budget, so I, I don't want to say we can't do, continue with some preliminary work, if that's the wishes of this council, and we'll figure out how to do that, but there's challenges all the way around, but, you know, we'll work around it, that's, that's what we do, so we'll, we'll, we'll take your, take your advice and do what we need to do.
Well, spoken like a true go-get-'em city manager, but I still don't want him to be overtaxed when we have other issues that may be more pressing, so I would support the fact that we want more information, but let's not make this issue overwhelming to where basically we're distracting from other vital issues for the city.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
I have a wholeheartedly concur.
Same, same here.
Okay, so we'll continue to gather information then, so the task force is still there, and I'll continue to work with council member Bowie and staff on this item, and if there is more information, we'll definitely bring it back to council for any proposed recommendations or actions that the task force would like to request from council. Seven C.
Seven C is adoption of community event sponsorship policy, and Kim Hoy is here.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and members of the city council, several months ago you requested that staff create a community event sponsorship policy for nonprofit organizations who ask for city sponsorship of community events, this policy would address events taking place within the public right-of-way, but would not include festivals which are approved through city council contractual agreements, staff has brought forth a policy that would limit the city's financial exposure to no more than $50,000 of in-kind support per fiscal year, and each event would not exceed a request of more than $5,000, allowing for a total of ten co-sponsored events per year, in-kind support would include staff and police support, use of city-owned equipment, including the showmobile stage and use of city facilities, but at no time does the city provide cash sponsorships, the policy would require that the organization making the request be a garden grove-based nonprofit, able to show that they've been established within the city for a minimum of five years, the request would be limited to one request per organization per year, the total value of the sponsorship would be no greater than $5,000, and any cost above that would be the responsibility of the nonprofit to pay the remaining portion, the nonprofit community events, which also serve as fundraising events, would be limited to four years of sponsorship with the value of the sponsorship decreasing by 25% each year, all of the requests would be made to the city manager, and the city manager would be authorized to approve up to 10 events per year, and if the number of requests exceeded 10, those additional requests would be brought back to the city council for consideration, staff has also identified three legacy events that we feel have become a tradition in the city and would be considered annually approved unless a city council action terminates for their sponsorship, those events would include the Cub Scout, Push Cart Derby, the West Garden Grove Youth Baseball Parade, and the annual Garden Grove Community Foundation Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament, that would leave seven sponsorships remaining for the fiscal year, so staff is recommending tonight that you adopt the proposed community event sponsorship policy, and that you authorize a city manager to implement and administer the new community event sponsorship policy, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Bowie, this is your requested item.
I felt this is important that we have some policy in place because we have limited fund to, you know, support other organizations, so at least this would be a good guidelines to kind of give the city a sense of how much we can provide to support it, and it also provides some of the avenues for, for, for things. provides some of the avenues for, for, for things that are very important to, to Garden Grove residents, such as the, you know, the Boy Scout event, and, and a couple other events. But, but other events outside of that, I think we need to, we don't have unlimited funds, and we are facing a deficit. So I think it's important that we set certain guidelines, so that other organizations who come to work and ask us for, for assistance, you know, at least we can, we are, we are ready to, we have some, you know, guideline to, to be fair to, to those people who come and ask us for assistance.
We do appreciate that. So I have a question. The annual Garden Grove Community Foundation Chamber of Commerce Golf fundraiser is a nonprofit community event that is fundraising. Is that correct?
Correct.
Why would they be exempt, even if they are considered a legacy community event? They're a fundraising event. So why would it be exempt? Because there are three here that, that are being proposed as legacy community events. The Cub Scout Push Derby, which is not a fundraising event. The West Garden Grove Youth Baseball Parade, which is not a fundraising event. And then we have a fundraising event. And I, I, I love the work that they do, because they give back a lot. But why would we make that special exemption when it is a fundraising event?
Well, initially, when the city council, well, as you know, the Willowick Golf Course, we have one free use of Willowick Golf Course a year. And so originally, the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce was utilizing that free use. And the way that the city assisted in, assisting the chamber was to allow them to use that golf course one time a year. And then about 14 years ago, I think, the community foundation joined forces with the chamber. And so in a way to assist both of them, they were, they were given that free use of the golf course every year. But it is a fundraising event. Right.
Question. Is a fundraising event more for the foundation, isn't it? The chamber, is that more of a mixer, social activity, or are they raising funds as well?
It actually receives half of the money as well. There's a, a split, a contractual split between the two, and so they actually do share the funds.
Okay. And we know all the proceeds, especially for the foundation, go directly back into the community.
That's correct.
Another question. 10, 10 events? Did you have, why did you pick 10 events at 5,000 each? Is that just a working number, just a gauge, or do you get that many requests a year from different groups, or?
Oftentimes, we get more than 10 requests a year, but we felt that $50,000 within the budget was a comfortable area of staff support that we could offer. And so we just said that we didn't want to exceed $5,000 per event. So we stipulated 10 events with that number.
And, Kim, as far as the one that are not fundraisers, let's say they go, come back every single year, are they going to have that $5,000 renew every year for their request? Or are we going to also put a decreasing amount for them too? What I mean is, like, for example, you have a nonprofit, non-fundraiser entity comes in four years in a row, are they going to get their straight-up 20 grand total from city support, or will we have a system where we tier them down too?
In this policy, if it was not a fundraising event, they would be able to actually come back every year and ask to be allowed to have their event. A, a good example of that, I mean, if I could just give an example, might be Orange County Autism. They utilize typically either the Community Meeting Center or Atlantis every year for their breakfast with Santa. It's not a fundraiser event. It's really open to the community. And so that might be an event that you'd like to, we don't really consider it a legacy event, but it would be an event where they would come every year and ask for use of the Community Meeting Center for their event.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Do you want to approve this? Is there a motion? I don't really have any opinion on it, really. Because I, I think with the limit on it, it actually limits not only this council, but future councils' ability to make a determination on a case-by-case basis. But if you want to implement this, then it will put limitations on not only this council, but future councils.
Well, for, for special events, the city council still have the ability to, to vote on it, right? This is just a guideline for general. And I, I think it's important that we have some, you know, guideline in place. And if there is a major event that come, you know, they can also appear in front of the city council to ask for, you know, for special approval. So, so I don't think your concern is, is really, you know, but, you know, legitimate here.
Just, I'm, I'm sorry. Just to clarify, Councilman Bowie, if you're talking about a special event, are you talking about festivals?
Yes.
Right. They are contractually-
Like, for example, Strawberry Festival, they could come to us and, and ask for, you know, special considerations should they have a need to.
Right. They actually would not, this policy would not pertain to them, because they contractually come to you under a contract. You approve that like every three years. And so that would be separate from this policy.
And this is not guidelines. This is an actual, we'd lay it out for, you come, you have your event, 5,000 this year, it was reduced, reduced, reduced continuously. And the incentive is to what, have outside funding?
If it's a fundraising event, only if you're a fundraising event, would it be reduced every year. So an example of that might be the 5K that we have with Sister City Organization. So this year, let's say that we were providing $5,000 in police support. Next year, we, you know, offer 3,500 or something like that. And then the year, it reduces the year after that. And by the fourth year, it would be zero. And each year, they would have to pay the remaining amount.
Well, I'm speaking for the Sister City Association. That's, that would be a hardship on them to implement this policy. I'm just letting you, the colleagues, know. I mean, they're always looking for means of, of providing for, for the Sister City Association, and this could have a dramatic effect on them. So I want you to take that into consideration. So if it's reduced for the next five years, we may not have that event, and in turn, we may not have a Sister City program with the ability to send our youth over to Korea and have that exchange program going on. So I just ask you to take that into consideration if we adopt this policy in these, as the way they're written here.
Well, with the, I think the motivation or the intention behind this policy, from what I remember, is not necessarily to put any into financial hardship, but to encourage groups to be more sustainable, and to develop ways to be more sustainable. That's all fine with me. My issue is, why would any council enact a policy where it is limiting the ability of not only this council, but future councils to decide on a case-by-case basis? That's just, I, I wouldn't want to limit the, the power of councils in general, because we're representing the public. That's just my philosophy. So, you know, that's, that's where I stand. I would like to encourage folks to find ways to be more sustainable. It's interesting, because we get a lot of requests from folks, and we want to help everybody, but at the same time, we have fiduciary responsibilities. And a lot of our decision-making is based on our fiduciary responsibility. Right? So, yes, we have to find a balance. My thing is, I just don't want to restrict future councils. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, maybe if I can add, chime in just for a second, if I recollect also some of the comments Councilman Bowie made and others, which caused us to go back and try to think about this. I think this was a draft that the staff made, trying to get at the fact that, you know, there were some comments from council, direction to us, to say, you know, how long do some of these events go on? Are, are we funding them indefinitely forever and ever? Are we ever encouraging them to become more self-sufficient? So I think this was kind of a stab by the Community Services Department to try and figure out a policy. You know, and, you know, groups and events are coming to us all the time. They're appearing before you. And, you know, part of it is probably there's some budgetary planning implications we're trying to think about. Is it just the first 10 that rush in the door in, as of July 1st, that gets some money, and we figure out how to fund them? And, you know, it's, whether it's in the budget or not in the budget, you know, we've asked some of our departments to have just, like, fire and, and police and public works to absorb some of those costs. So I think it was, it, it was a good exercise for us to, to think, to go through, and I'm glad Councilman Bowie sort of raised the question, for us to kind of think through this. So, you know, this was a stab at our part to try and come up with something. If, you know, want us to, if you've got other ideas for us to have ways to get at this, we're willing to look at it. But I think that was some of the thinking that we went through.
I, I think on one hand, we do not want this to be, you know, a burden to, you know, nonprofit associations who want to provide certain services to, to resident in, in our city. But on the other hand, we, we also do not want to, you know, keep, you know, rewarding a particular group at the expense of the others. And so I think that's why we want to encourage the group that, that receive assistance from the city to be, you know, you know, less dependent on the city for help, so that we can have that fund to help other nonprofit organizations that, that, that would like to receive help from us. That's intent here. It's not, it's not, I think maybe we need to draft changes a little bit, so that there is some flexibility to, to, to group who might not be able to, to meet this, you know, strict guideline here. But I, I think the, the spirit of this guidelines is so that, you know, one particular group going to just keep asking the city over and over, years after years, for, for assistance.
So that this is how, this is how I look at it. I, I think that's really good, and the intention is great. So bottom line is, council is considering to limit, and to budget, rather, $50,000 annually. That's what we're looking at. Okay?
Actually, if I could clarify that, there is no budget allocation of $50,000. We were just saying that we don't want to, to use staff support more than $50,000 worth. But there is no $50,000 set aside for any staff support in this policy.
But this, this would?
No, it would not.
It would not?
No. We're just saying that there, there is no money set aside for this. It's just as you come forward, and the staff support that we offer to you, we're trying to put a value on that, not to exceed $50,000. So we're not being asked for thousands and thousands of dollars of staff support. But each department would have to basically absorb within their existing budget, whatever staff support they lend to these services, these organizations.
Okay. I see. So it's putting parameters on council's decision-making, limited to $50,000. However, it's not budgeted.
Limited to 10 events, really.
Okay.
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay. If we're going to do this, then wouldn't we want to make this a budget item for council? I mean, you know, I, I think that's really what we should consider here.
Even though it's not a hard money that we are offering to this, this group, it is, it is, it comes, still coming down to, to budget money, right? Because if, if staffs-
It does have value.
Yes. $50,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In-kind services.
So why, why, why don't we just, you know, create, you know, make sure that's available, so we don't put a strain on departments, and have, have, have that kind of discretion for council?
Well, excuse me, if I clarify, that's a mixed bag of nuts, because part will be community services, part of it, public works, part of it could be police, part of it, you know, you don't have one designated budget fund for $50,000, and you split up certain ways. So I don't know the mechanics of the budget and that, I expect, but, yeah, designated $50,000. It's more related to staff time. So I don't know how you budget that.
There's a calculation that's done on staff time. But there's also a council fund as well. What is that annual amount? Mr. Okiriki?
Well, I, I don't know for sure right now. I'll have to look that up. But we're not talking about, you know, appropriating additional monies for this purpose. All we're saying here is that, um-
No, I know. I know. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
I think the guideline we have here is definitely reasonable. I think if the mayor's concern is that, you know, we don't want to take the, the right or the power of the council away, we can always have a clause in there that says, you know, you are at liberty to bring it to council if your request exceeds what's put here on the guideline. I don't know how much more time that would take for us to deliberate and all that, but we haven't seen that much, that much of a concern through my time here on, on the council of asking, you know, us to take action like that.
That makes sense. That makes sense to me.
And just to clarify also, Mayor, the policy does allow that, let's say that there were 10 events that came forward, and the city manager approved those 10 events, and then we have events 11, 12, and 13 that come up. They can still return to the city council and ask for approval for those, and you have the authority to say, yes, we'll offer you the staff support for those events. It doesn't limit you just to the 10. You could still consider more. But the first 10 would be approved by the city manager.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Jones?
I respect and I appreciate the good intentions here to mine the city's purse strings and to sort of take a look at these things. But I personally don't think there's anything broken here in this realm at this moment, and I prefer not to fix it. So I'd say let's take it under advisement that we should pay close attention to, you know, these things on a, as can be. But I don't feel a personal need to adopt a policy and to tighten it at midnight or whatever it feels like right now. And I just have a feeling that if we did it, then sometime within the next year or two, somebody's going to get hurt from it. Some group that we didn't mean to hurt is going to be subject to some clause in this thing that we didn't think of right now. And I don't mean to inflict that upon any other groups. So I would say we should be mindful of what we do, and we should help the community where we can. And we're doing great, and I don't see the need for adopting a formal policy in this regard personally.
And Brother Fat, when you made the recommendation to review this, was not to name any certain group, but was there any group in mind that you thought were particular offenders?
No, not, not in particular. We're just concerned about the fact that we have many other groups who come to ask us for, for help, you know. And, and I'm, I'm worried about generally that we do not have any guidelines. We just, we just, you know, be in a reactive mode rather than a proactive planning mode. And so that, this is what I, I think we should have. Obviously, we, there need to be some flexibility so that the city council can, can, you know, decide one way or the other when, when, when another group come to us and ask for help. But we still have, we still need to have a general criteria, so that, so that staff and the city council can act, you know, based on that. And if there's certain, certain time when we need to, to, to assist other organizations, it's certainly, the, the city council can do whatever they want to do, right? Because we, we, we can, for example, in, in years that we have more budget, we can certainly, you know, based on the, a very bit of funding, that we can, you know, assist other organizations. But we got to be a proactive rather than reactive.
Okay.
No, I, I don't want to move. I, I agree with Mayor Part 10. I don't want to start a policy at 10:30, 10:25 at night. I think we, this is a good start to look it over, to, to, to look at our finances related to events. I wonder about the legacy of- I wonder about the legacy events, though. I, I like that aspect of it, I really do, because that, that's a planning mechanism, that a lot, not just the events, but it allows staff to plan for the, for the coming year, that is, in, in, in the scope of things.
You wanna add anything to the legacy?
No, no, well, if I could, I know what, you know what I would add, but, but from looking at fundraising aspect versus legacy events, this is part of our community, this is what Garden Grove's all about. Strawberry Festival, definite. These other legacies, definite. The foundation, the, the chamber, that, that is Garden Grove. So, so I think this is a good start to looking over, and I commend Councilmember Bowie for bringing it forward, but-
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Hearing none, let's move on. Is that okay?
Sure.
All right. 7D.
7D has awarded a contract to Cato Landscape Inc. for project number 7279, and Bill Murray is here to provide that report.
Thank you, Ms. Baylor, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, council is being asked to award a contract to Cato Landscaping for the installation of irrigation and landscape on Magnolia Street from Westminster to Trask Avenue. The work to be done will cause minor traffic delays in the area regardless of efforts of staff and the contract, contractor to minimize the impacts. The delays will be caused by the closure of the inside traffic lanes next to the median in order to facilitate the construction. The work will include the removal and replacement of the grass landscape sections with drought-tolerant plantings and new pattern-stamped concrete. An effort has been made to keep the existing mature trees and add magnolia trees where appropriate. The median irrigation will be replaced with a modern drip system, and all work will be done at a cost of nearly $375,000. Staff received and opened two bids on May 10th of this year and determined that Cato Landscaping was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in July and should be complete by December of this year. The project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for using Measure M and Water Enterprise funds. This concludes staff's report.
Any questions for staff? Sounds like a no-brainer here. entertain a motion.
Move it. Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passed with five yes votes.
Thank you. Okay. Let's start with city manager.
Before we go, did we skip the sanitary and the successor? Did we?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
And we have a closed session. And we have a closed session.
Correct, that's right.
Okay, let's go into successor. Mr. Jones?
Do I have the right one? Yes. Madam Clerk, would you like to call role?
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Winn?
Yes.
Member Fawn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communications simultaneously with other legislative bodies. We have consent items, just receive and file minutes and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Move the items.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion passed with five yes votes.
Matters seeing none, we will adjourn to-
Sanitary.
Sanitary.
Madam Clerk, please call role.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Winn?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Fawn?
Here. We've had oral communications, two consent items, the approval in agreement with Discovery Science Center for a school recycling program, and receive and file the minutes from April 26, 2016 meeting.
Move it.
Second. Call for vote, please.
Motion passed with five yes votes.
No public hearings, items for consideration, any matters from the board? Seeing none, we'll adjourn. Our next meeting will be on June 28th at 6:30 here at the community center.
Reconvening council, let's start with Mr. Stiles.
Mayor, members of council, just, and I'll be very brief on item 8A. My, my part of the discussion will be very brief. And all I wanted to mention and just remind the council and the public that on June 8th, we will have our study session on the budget. We've been doing, you know, a lot of work with staff on that. We'll be talking about the revenue, how revenue projections have been concluding towards the end of the fiscal year along with expenses. You know, I've heard council members talk about deficits tonight. There'll be some good news, some bad news. I would, would anticipate that, you know, we're, we're still in deficit mode. Will be, will we be in as bad a deficit mode as we were last year? I'm hoping we will not be, but we're still gonna have some very, very serious challenges to think about, and Mr. O'Kareke, myself, Mr. McClellan, the budget director, will be kind of going through that on, on the 8th. We hope that we'll be able to report that we're making some progress on that deficit, and we've been paying very close attention to areas in particular that I know that you have given us clear direction on. One is to pay very close attention to the fiscal condition of the city, and in particular to reduce the deficit as, as smartly and, and quickly as we can, while at the same time paying attention to enhancing public safety, safety services. Those aren't, don't necessarily match up equally, and so those, that's where some of our challenges are, but we're trying to pay attention to your, to your direction on both of those fronts. So with that, you know, we're completing, we've been completing individual meetings with all of our departments, going through requests that they have, trying to see what we can plausibly consider funding. We're in a continuation budget from last year to this year, so that's kind of the mindset of where, where all of our departments are. So June 8th, coming back to you more, and that's where the real serious discussions are that we'll have with you. So I just wanted to take this time tonight to mention that.
Thank you. Colleagues? Mr. Beard?
Yeah, I think I'm obligated to report on the conference I just attended, the international conference on shopping centers. City manager and I just had returned yesterday, yeah, yesterday afternoon, late afternoon, and it was very productive meetings. We, we covered all gamuts of the city, talked to developers, investors, a lot of promising prospects out there. I think it's well worth our attendance at that event, and we have been going for the last 20-plus years. You know, Mayor Pro Tem is aware of the conference. I would encourage, if you have an opportunity next year to go, it's very, very, very interesting. It is, I was impressed last year, I was even more impressed, but I'm just as impressed with our own staff and marketing the city, outreach and such. So, and with that, they're still there. We have a booth, and it is just a huge conference. It is the Mecca or shopping center event of the entire year. There's 40,000 people throughout the whole country attended. Yeah, it's very impressive. And again, our, our staff are impressive, and I was impressed with the people stopping by our booth. We had our displays, we had our pictures of Nickelodeon, we had the Grove District, we had examples of what's coming in our future, and that, that's bringing in people, interest and attention. People are just as much interested in seeing what we have in our city as much as we are reaching out to others, as what they could bring into our city. So I was very impressed, again, with our staff and our marketing and our efforts, and I think it's very worthwhile. And again, I encourage you, if you have an opportunity to go next year, please do so. You get a lot of benefit out of it. I learned a lot, and you can always learn more, and it's very interesting. So I reported on that.
That's awesome.
Anything else I need to report? Mr. Attorney?
You know, and, you know, I'd like to concur with Councilman Beard. It was my first time attending the ICSC event as well. It is massive, it's huge, and I would say don't underestimate the fact that we had one of our elected leaders with us, with different people that came by. Not every, we were in a big area that was the world of cities or something like that, so there were lots of cities that had booths. Because we've been going so long, we're in a particularly good location where we get a lot of visibility, even more so than some other cities that are kind of tucked away, a little farther back. So we're in a location that we, we get good visibility, and the people that we meet with, I must say, that when we have one of our elected leaders with us, it makes a difference. It's important. It makes an impact on them. So the fact that Councilman Beard was with us, it was a very good thing in my opinion. And Ms. Kim, our economic development director, reported, they had a whole, I think the two of us were pretty tired at the end of the day, and they were carrying on all day today as well. So I know they've been putting a lot of work in there, and there's just so many people, it wears you out. It's, it really is. So thank you to Councilman Beard for attending. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, thank you both for representing our city well. Just a quick question on, on that. Any conversations with Trader Joe's?
Yeah, I think they were probably having some more conversations today, so we've been, you know, we've been pushing that.
Yeah, working it.
We've been working it. There's a lot of retailers out there that are, you know, interested in our city and-
Yeah, yeah, it's not just Trader Joe's, there are quality retailers out there.
That's right.
You wanna go next? Sure.
Yeah, just so I can jump in on that.
Sure.
Talk, so, I don't know if I've gone every single year, but I've, this is one of the only years I haven't gone in about the last 15 years. I can say, going back to a time, a long time ago, our city didn't have any budget, we didn't have a booth, but we had energetic folks like Greg Blodgett that would go there and just print up makeshift flyers promoting the city and walk around and sort of strategically leave them on tables where people were hanging out, eating and that kind of stuff, and just, you know, meeting people and trying to get in front of people and promote the city. So going back to that point and then going through the last big boom cycle where, at one point, we had a pretty big elaborate booth that was sort of separate from all the little municipal booths, and we had quite a presence there. And, I mean, our history at that conference has been very vital to the city's redevelopment. There was a, there was a young 22-year-old kid that approached us one time and said, you know, give me a chance, let me do this deal and whatever, and that was Chad McWinnie, who's since built four hotels in our city, including Great Wolf Lodge. So that's, that's where we met him, was at ICSC many years ago. So it's been a, it's been a very fruitful conference. It's, my understanding, it's the second largest conference in Vegas. There's the Consumer Electronics Show, and then next behind that is ICSC, and I think per year report was about 40, 46,000 people that attend the event. It's huge. It sprawls over that whole convention center space, and you gotta walk long distances to get to the retail alley and then back over to where the developers are and where the cities are. So pretty, pretty intriguing. And a lot of meetings always set up in advance, so your schedule's generally pretty tight from meeting to meeting to meeting. And once, it's been many years ago, but I did actually have a meeting there with Trader Joe's, and they basically said that they're the good-looking cheerleader and everybody wants him, and we should get in line, and our, our demographics aren't good enough for them and whatever. So we've been on a mission to try and improve our stats, and it was primarily household incomes were too low and percentage of college degrees were too low, so we need to keep improving on those. Since then, we've, we've done these events where we honor college graduates every year, and that's where that came from, so.
Yeah, one final thing. I was impressed going throughout the whole conference that how Scott knows everybody, knows somebody in every part of the country, because they were stopping and saying hi to Scott. So he, this man has quite a network out there throughout the country. And Orange County, city managers, businesses, or business people from his past life in Ohio. So that was impressive, too. In fact, we, we were delayed getting to all our destinations sometimes because Scott was holding us up, talking to people. No, they were happy to see him, and we're very fortunate to have Scott, and they let us know that, too.
Thank you. Mr. Barry?
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Fat?
Just wanted to invite our city out to our strawberry festival this weekend. We kick it off on Friday evening at 6 o'clock with a cake cutting by the mayor, and then thereafter, we have the parade there on, on Saturday morning. Before that, you can come out on Main Street and join us for a 5K jog or walk or race. And after that, it goes on until all the way Monday, which leads us to Memorial Day. So I'm just taking the opportunity to thank all of our veterans and all of our supporters from back home when we're out in the front line. It means a lot to us.
Okay, we have closed session. Mr. Sandoval?
We have five items for initiation litigation, and that's all we have for tonight.
Okay, if we take any action tonight, we'll report out-
Correct.
-after. And later, we'll adjourn in memory of Jerry McCluskey, former mayor and city council member of Laguna Nigal, and also Amin David, legendary OC Latino rights activist, founder of Los Amigos of Orange County, who died at 83. founder of Los Amigos of Orange County, who died at eighty-three.